It seems like a British accent.
Yeah, it does sound like that.
Okay, recording's going. Nobody said it straight. Good.
Okay, so it's the May 15th, GPOS regular meeting. Welcome, everybody. Girdwood Board of Supervisors committees and subcommittees subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 24.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 of meetings. We operate under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct in the meeting through order at 7:01. Do a introductory of members. My name is Mike Edgington. I'm co-chair and land use supervisor.
It's about right.
Brianna Sullivan, co-chair and Parks and Recreation Cemetery Supervisor.
Guy Wade, Fire Department.
Jennifer Wingard, Roads and Utilities.
And Dr. Clark.
Amanda Sassy, Public Safety Supervisor.
Thank you. Normally do disclosures now, but we'll do them as we hit each item during the agenda. First of all, I would call promotion to approve tonight's agenda.
I move to approve. I also have amendments.
Okay, so it's little room sign to really possible. Sure, I'll say. Right, any amendments?
I have amendment that number 11 be moved to our special meeting because it's administrative and can do that outside of a regular meeting. Okay, if I could continue, I also have a new business, number 14, because of the time sensitivity for that comment period could be move it to old business and that way we could act on it.
Okay.
And number 20, due to time interest and sensitivity for their comment period and the guests in the room, that new business 20 goes up to old business.
Okay. Yep. Do you have a preference in which order, 20 and 14?
Um, 20 before 14.
Okay. Do I hear a second amendment?
I'll second it.
Yep. And he's got on the level?
Yes. So why are we putting 20 before 14? I would anticipate 14 to be quick.
Doesn't matter to me if I'm wanting the same question. There's just people in the room that probably want to hear 20. But you're right, 14 to be quick.
All right, clear. So 20 is gonna go into old businesses we're gonna, we could make.
Yeah.
Still that.
The authorized.
Just real quick, I do appreciate your comment Jennifer. I didn't think of it thoroughly.
Any other comments? Okay, in that case, I will, let's call for a roll call vote on the amendment first.
Sure. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Any discussion on the gender approval as amended? If you're able to, that's what. Please come.
Oh, yes. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Agenda as amended passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you. So we'll deal with the following. I'm gonna do this following statements together unless I hear objections. So I would entertain a motion. This will be minutes for April 17th meeting, April 19th budget review meeting, the April 24th MOA and GPOS quarterly meeting, and the May 2nd special meeting.
Salute.
You, the second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing any, any, I'll take this by assent in this idea and objection. Hearing any confirmation approved. Announcements. Public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comments. Raise your hands and wait for your knowledge, online or in person. Help discussions stay productive. Please direct comments to both of the members of the public. Comments focused on the business under discussion. Be respectful of everyone's opinions. Go straight into the first item, which is legislative. You know, get the geese a little representative.
I haven't seen Tennessee either. No, I don't see either.
Probably very few in the last dying rooms in particular, central. Okay, in that case, 70 members. Zach Johnson or Randy? Or I don't know who's on.
Randy.
Randy's here.
Oh, sorry. I didn't see you. Okay, ready? Oh, please come ahead. Go ahead. Sit over here, please.
Yeah, that's fine. You talk loud enough, he'll pick you up.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. And walk through my list of various things. Not a ton's been going on lately. We've been bringing in new members and orientating them. See, go through some of those, starting with most recent, working our way back. We had a meeting on the 9th. That was actually the first full meeting for the new assembly members. Probably the biggest thing that came out of that was resolution around the library director and some of the issues there. But again, the deputy library director resigned that day, which kind of resolved the issue. We also, May 5th, Friday, had a special meeting where we went to executive session on the two lawsuits, Heather McAlpine, Naomi Diboski. And that's about all I can say, but you can read the paper. So we'll leave it at that. We also are well underway on the clean slate strategy that Felix Rivera put forward. Now, it's basically to wipe the slate clean. Doesn't mean we're favoring one option or another option. It puts everything back on the table and nothing on the table. Going through the criteria, which we've kind of gone through the past couple of years, probably the one thing that's changed is look at more smaller, more diverse geographically as far as camps. And we created two task force out of that. One is the complex behavior task force that start, that meets Wednesday, 1:00 to 2:30. The second, second is the sanctioned camp task force that meets Thursday, 2:00 to 3:30. Along with the sanctioned camps, there's no mitigation this summer. Those that follow along with mitigation, it's a game of whack-a-mole, right? So we move them to this park, put up a notice, 15 days, sometimes the camps would move, sometimes they wouldn't, and they just pop up somewhere else. Here's constantly chasing around. So what we're trying to do is put the camps in certain areas, maybe an initial mitigation upfront, but then we'll, we'll stop wasting resources on that. You could still call Parks and Recs, you could still call APD if there's a health and safety issue. Instead of putting our efforts in to kind of sort out how to better improve sanctioned camping, which includes things like pallet shelters, defined spaces, sort of like Centennial Park, but learn from the failings of that. And then also, really, I think my focus is trying to get ready for next winter. If we don't have a mass shelter when the temperatures dip, we'll be back in the Sullivan. And while that's the only place we have, it's still not a great idea. So I'm trying to fix that. Uh, let's see. On April 25th, that was a meeting where we brought in the new members. Of course, we brought them in properly. We didn't swear man until 11:30 at night. And we, we passed and approved the budgets in that meeting, which will set the tax, the bill rates. We are $20,000, $20,000 below the tax cap. And I believe most of the alcohol tax surplus was also used up. Let's see, other items. Community council boundaries being redrawn, that's coming to a close. That's a 10-year boundary review, kind of kicked off by the census. Tom Davis is in charge of that. If you have the assembly website, you can catch the link to get to that, see the maps. See. See things that you would care about. I did, I know Dibos has heard the same, but I did sit down with the mayor. He'd mentioned that Holden Hills is coming back. That's the first official word I had heard of that, it's coming back. I haven't heard anything else. I have no further details. I haven't talked to AFSO about it. So it's just that, and he didn't say if that was this year, next year, or what that looks like. So just want to share that with you. And of course, you're all aware of the Alleyska interchange, that I think said about 30% design. And that's it. Any questions? And Zach, Zach, I think would be, he's on vacation, I believe.
That and the Soul Arena, you, what's your forecast for future of that, to get back to a public use facility?
So there's, on the Sullivan Arena, what's gonna happen in the future? So there's, there's two ideas. One is return it the way it was. I've been there many times. It's not that bad. It, it hasn't been destroyed. It's probably been neglected. So things like chillers and things would need to be replaced.
It's kind of a concrete structure. It's kind of hard to start it.
Yeah, it's, and truthfully, the, the shelter portion looked great. And that was limited, I think, 150, 200 beds. The part that they had problems with was the warming shelter side, which ran just during the daytime. And that's where they had in excess of 200, 300 people that they released every night. Feels better than letting people stay outside of nowhere else to go. So one thought is return it as is, put some money into it, revamp it. The other option is tear it down. And there's actually a plan, sort of an architectural drawing that I've seen, that adds another sheet, adds another sheet of ice covered to Ben Moki, adds two outdoor ice rinks, tears down Anchorage Football Stadium, takes Mulcahy and moves it to the corner of. See? Yes, who's that corner? And then all that space that opens up in the middle, they want to develop into apartment-style housing, condo-style housing, try to put like a Cars or another type of supermarket chain in there. Try to just revamp that entire space and make it more usable. You know, AFS had a great purpose back in the day when it was the only artificial turf in this, in the, in the district. But now just about every high school has turf, every high school has a track. So it really doesn't get used quite that much. The hockey team, the Wolverines, aren't that interested in the Sullivan Arena. And the Aces don't want, they want their own stadium, or at the Aces, UAD. There are two options. So, see.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Go ahead.
Are you curious if the larger office camps will, how keep it at rest?
So some of the larger camps are putting porta-potties by. So hopefully that'll improve the situation. Otherwise, they're probably doing whatever is going. So. But that's, several camps been identified and they are putting porta-potties in the area.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. So thank you very much. Um, do we confirm that wasn't on?
I, yes.
Yeah, it's not here yet. Okay. Didn't see anyone in the mayor's office. So let's move on to school board. Andy. Hold on, Andy Coleman. Welcome.
Yes, how do you do? Not too much to report. We are going into graduation season. So it's kind of a celebratory time for the school district. And just a reminder that in a few weeks, your high school students will be out. Seniors certainly will be, and everybody will be out in about three weeks. So be careful of them out there. Biggest news from the last meeting is we did move to change the start times. Where elementary would go first, then high school, then middle school, finishing at 4:00 PM. There's more information about that on the website. It will not go into effect this fall. It is planned for fall a year from now. The 2024, 25 school year. This is based on the notion that if we start high school later, kids will sleep more. They're not gonna sleep the whole time. We totally get that. But in other places, when they have had a later start for high school, it has led to better performance on tests, reduced accidents, and a few other things that, that are all positives for us. Also, going into effect this fall, every Monday, all levels of school will start one hour later. And that time will be used for professional collaboration between staff. This is something that's been done in the high schools for a couple of years. It will be done at middle school and elementary in the fall as well. And that, that does start this coming fall. Outside of that, the legislature is still spinning around on a final budget. And if you do believe that the BSA for schools needs to be increased a little bit or a lot, you do want to get in touch with your representative and let them know how you feel. Hopefully something, I'm in favor of a significant increase, obviously. But everyone should get in touch with the representative to let them know where they're at. I think those are the main news items. Happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community? And see? And online? Is there a question from online?
No, sorry, somebody has muted themselves. Sorry, got it.
Thank you very much, Andy.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah, sure. Just go ahead.
Since what is elementary and middle school? Will we serve that new model for start times if there's any of the Girdwood school times leaving?
Were, were you able to hear that question, Andy?
It broke up a little bit. I couldn't quite make it out.
Yeah, I'll try and rephrase it. Because Girdwood School is both an elementary and a middle school, what time does it start?
Excellent question. I apologize for not thinking to ask that when it was being rolled out. But I will inquire and get back with you at the next meeting on that.
Hey, I'm listening to more questions. Thank you very much, Andy. Appreciate it. We'll move on to supervisor report. We'll start with, I have a report.
Yeah, that thing, I think, people have seen back there. We'll give a choose report, a couple items on the thing that we'll talk about later. Nothing for me, but shout out, if you saw on the news, the rescue down at 20 Mile out of the mud. So that was a happy and lead to a, something that could have been pretty bad. So, yeah. Take all the training paid off on spades on that. So shout out to them on that. Done again.
Thank you. Jennifer, Roads and Utilities. It was that note. Sorry. Brianna?
Yes, thank you, Mike. Randy Salt mentioned the 2029. And once suddenly, it just appears the cemetery was going to be an item that they were, we thought they would be voting on. But Representative Cross said that there's work on an S1 version for an area-wide cemetery. So they all, yes, and this moved to the June 20th meeting. So that was a surprise, but it's good work probably going into the S1. And then regarding the clean slate strategy with Felix Rivera and Mr. Boland, they have asked all of South Anchorage councils, including GPOS, to choose one representative. So I went to that meeting and this Thursday, that group will be selecting one representative to send to that meeting to represent Anchorage. And that would probably not be someone from Girdwood. And then the Trails Committee, the next meeting will be a trail work meeting on June 5th. And if you'd like to participate or can't participate that day, look up the Friends of Girdwood Trails for being on trails this summer. But moving inside, that's all I have.
Thank you. Amanda?
Thank you. I don't have anything to report that isn't already on the agenda.
Thank you. And my report is also very short. I don't have anything to reply. Wouldn't report it on the, yeah.
Okay.
Or was this issue with Felix, if you hadn't. So I have no other more time. Any questions from the community? If not, we will move on to item number three, service provider reports. We will start with Chief Weston.
I know, it feels weird. Okay, so hello, I'm Michelle Weston, Park Chief. Thank you for giving the shout out to the crew for the save. You know, one of the things that happened with those, with those responses are that, you know, it does take us 14, 15 minutes to get to 20 Mile and that, right? And then it take, and then you have to get the tool out. And then it usually takes, you know, 16, 20 minutes to get the person out, depending on how far they're stuck. So just a reminder, if you are stuck, please call when it's at your knee or lower. When it's up to your chest, it can be very stressful for everyone involved, especially the people that are stuck in the mud. And so it was, it worked very well. There were bystanders there that had tied the guy off to a log. He was really stuck, one leg fully, and then his other leg was out, but he was, he was submerged up to his top of his chest weight. So pretty stressful. Those calls are very, you know, high risk. It was at low tide though, so that was a good thing. But you know, if it had been a different time, it would have been different. And the bystanders had tried for an hour to try and get him out, right? So, you know, I guess the lesson there is call early. I just want to give a shout out. All of those dry suits that the, the guys and ladies are wearing were donated, right? That's, I think Rotary donated some funds for that. We fundraised for that. So all of the water rescue equipment we fundraised for. And so that is a direct result of they were wearing stuff that was donated by the community and they saved somebody. So that's a win for the whole community, I think. In terms of responses, we're pretty busy. We're at 167. I just got off the meeting with the Afisa corridor, which is the other chiefs in the Kenai Peninsula. They're quieter. Whittier EMS is kind of understaffed right now. So we are taking their patients, but the police officers are driving them through the tunnel. And then we are picking them up on the other side. Hopefully they will resolve that issue soon. What we do do, and I would just recommend this for everyone, is if we go to, say, Whittier, and so if you're a boat owner in Whittier, we will try and put that patient on with LifeMed or Guardian. So having air ambulance insurance is, is not necessarily a bad thing to have. You can also sign up for air ambulance insurance if you're still cognizant up until the point you get on the helicopter. So just, I think that's something to know. But, yes. But, but it's, I think a worthy investment. And also here on the highway, we also use the air ambulance services. Obviously, we can't always fly, but if it's critical patients, we do. So that's just a shout out to them. They do great work. I'm not, this is not an infomercial, which is, I think, something to know about. Just a reminder, if you don't have one, Garmin's are usually good devices, or little enriches, communication devices to have if you do anything in the back country. Those are good to have too. We're still working with the Kenai Peninsula on sort of larger communication issues and trying to pass and try to get harm. But I think it's gonna still be a couple of years out. So just, those are also good to have. In terms of fire, fire stuff, we have six new members who came with substantial career certs. So that was good. And they are settling in and just ray of sunshine to be in the department. Additionally, this, for the next three days, we have signed up with, there's a remote learning opportunity for people to become advanced EMTs through an online process. And then you go in and do shortened tents. It's the first time it's happening in Alaska. So we've signed up to be a testing site with, and we have two community members in that right now. And so you can learn to be an EMTA on your own schedule and then go in testing. And so ourselves, Esther and Juneau, our departments, that are signed up to do this. And that benefits the community because we will now have access to some EMS training aids that we would not normally be given access to through area-wide EMS. So it sort of advances our skill level and ability to access training. So happy about that. They're over there today. So there's two ladies from Soldovia, and I believe somebody from Noo over there, and then the guy from Fairbanks. And then shout out to the Double Musky who just purchased an AED for the Double Musky. That's super awesome. And we still have a few places that we're trying to get AEDs into in the community. There's no AEDs in Bird or Indian, so just FYI. We're still trying to get one down at the gas station. But Musky bought one, we're working with the mine on one of those there. If there's any Crow Creek residents, top of Crow Creek residents, I've still, you know, I've asked you guys, do you have a place that we could put one up there for you? So that's happening. So that program is doing really well. And of course, the brewery is fundraising by beer sales for their AED. So anyway, I probably can't say drink beer, but anyway, because they're. Wildfire season really hasn't taken off here in South Central. Although, Western Emergency Services, which is down Anchor Point, they had a big grass fire today and closed the highway. It is high fire danger up in Fairbanks, red flag danger in the Deltana area today. And then there's the, the state of Alaska has the worst flooding situation in certain areas since 2013. Any questions for me?
Questions from the board?
Really, Chief Austin, thank you. The, the scenario right now with Whittier being short-staffed, you said soon, but do you know how?
No. They are hiring with a very attractive package for a chief and a captain. So I am hoping that they will be advertising for that soon. You have to live in Whittier, though. That's a requirement of those positions. And then we were going over there, but it just, it doesn't work for us to go over there because it's an extra time out of the service area. So kind of tough love situation, telling them, bring the person to the other side. Now, obviously, if there's the mother of all events, we will work something out. But, you know, it's, it is what it is. So, yeah. And they haven't reached out and asked for assistance in any other way, other than just continually calling 911.
So I just can follow up on that. So the situation we have now, it's not considered out of area, it's just within area. We just.
It is within area, yes.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the community or board? I'm seeing any. Thank you very much. I will move on to the. Please.
I will give an update.
One point of process.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I just wanted to say, if anyone's having trouble hearing, we can put chairs up here or, you're welcome to move forward in the room. I know the acoustics in here are tough. So if you have any trouble hearing at all.
Well, we can check out.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Flight of Chief Asher?
Oh, please. Yes.
Sorry.
I'll give an update for Chief Asher. I forgot to remind him today that we had the meeting tonight. So that's why he's not here. But we've been working closely on a few issues related to actually homeless camps and seeing how to address that with our limitations now with the current situation for the municipality of Anchorage. They have, they had, since the last meeting, a very busy slush cup. Actually, quite a few calls and requests for service during that weekend event. But overall, everything went well. And they processed that out nicely. We also ran the impound yard and we had several toes for illegal cars, mostly blocking emergency ways and hydrants during that period. Now, the resort is closed down. Things have quieted down. But as tourism picks up and operations come back, I'm sure traffic and requests for services will pick up as well. We are also working on the substation here and addressing some changes there to help make that more functional for the police. And so we'll be meeting with ACS in the first part of June to do a walkthrough and talk about those changes. So we'll bring that back before the Public Safety Advisory Committee and GPOS to discuss any costs associated with those changes to that substation at this time. The police department is fully staffed. They did have some people out and extended lead due to on-work injuries. But now everybody's back and, and working with that. We are paying close attention to their EMS situation because it does affect, impact the police department. As stated, the police are sometimes helping getting people to the ambulians. And so I know Chief Asher is trying his best to find some personnel to work there and leadership for the fire department. The structure of the fire department or the public safety over there is there was one public safety director who oversaw police and fire. And Chief Asher has been working with their council to fund a chief of fire and a chief of police. So, and the council now has finally approved that. So he's trying to hire somebody on board. So, so we'll keep an eye on that, make sure it doesn't affect our. So so we'll keep an eye on that, make sure it doesn't affect our services overall. So that's all I have for police at this time.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Community? Thank you. Fantastic. So we will move on to your next poll, Kyle, which is bars and roads.
Just quickly with parks and roads, we'd like to point out that we've brought on our seasonal staff for the year, for the summer. Luke and John, they started today and they will be working here in the community. They are local residents who have lived here for, some for twenty-plus years, others for about ten years. And we're excited to have them on board. We have a ton of projects between the park facilities and then trail projects that we'll be working on this summer. So you'll see them out and about, working on those projects. And then we are campground hosts, Cara and Jared. They will be moving in maybe this evening or tomorrow into the park. And so they'll be based there and they both are locally employed. So we're excited to have all those folks on and helping us out for the summer season. Winter has finally let go and so we've finally gotten going on projects. We were actually out there last week blowing off the skate park and the tennis courts and trying to get things open. And it's amazing what a weekend of warm temperatures make a difference. So flowers are coming up and we'll be getting going on all the cleanup with the parks over these coming weeks out there. So I just really like to commend Bethany and Robin from the school who led a great fundraising campaign with Kelly Holter for the Slaton Mole baseball field. They raised seventeen thousand dollars for the field through their silent auction and their raffles. And we will be using those to have improved safety features for players out there as well. Our hope is to build a new batting cage. So we'll be working on those projects throughout the summer. Baseball season is upon us and so the players that grew with Giants will be starting next week. So we invite you to come down to the snack shack and support the baseball field by buying a hot dog or a hamburger and then watching either minors or majors play and representing Gerwood against the Abbot Rabbit teams from Anchorage. So they'll be out there. Trails plan, we are, right now, we have the blue candidate and we're going to be going for the HLBAC, the Heritage Land Bank Advisory Commission, at the end of this month, seeking their support for the plan. And we have started the process with the planning department to go for planning and zoning and then on to the assembly for a hopeful adoption of the plan. And so we'll be working on that. We'll be talking about that later on tonight in the agenda about the fees associated with and the support we'll need to get over that final hump to get that plan adopted. And then we're also working with the Gerwood Trails Committee on a new trails map, updating the trails map for Gerwood. And then particularly installing a trail map out at the five K parking lot where we're seeing increased use, especially in the summer for the Iditarod and trail system and people parking out there. So we're working on that. And then the replacement of the hand tram and the new suspension bridge. We have finally got all the approvals from purchasing, excuse me, from the assembly. And we're waiting just on assigned documents from purchasing and the city manager. And then our design contractors are ready to go and they've basically shifted their schedule around. And we'll be working through the summer to get that design document done so that we hopefully go out to bid in the fall and get a contractor on board and get that bridge built in twenty-four. So you'll probably be seeing more updates on that as we move through the summer and hopefully presenting you with a thirty-five percent plan about midsummer for that project. As well, we'll be chasing Erasmus and grant in the fall as they've expressed interest in this project. So so we'll be working on those altogether. As always, Margaret does a great job of keeping our social media and our websites up to date out there. And oh, and one highlight is that we were awarded a Kenai Mountain Turnigan Arm Heritage Center grant for funding Alaska Trail Crew for three weeks. So they will be starting with us at the end of, at the end of this month and working on the Beaver Pond in the middle of Iditarod Trail, particularly dealing with some of the slide damage issues on the, on the Beaver Pond at the southern end and then dealing with a lot of our mud holes in the middle and upper section out there. And so we look forward to having them with us and hope for a lot of snow melt and we'll dealing with some bridge work up on the middle of Iditarod in that section. So excited to get that grant and we really want to thank Kate Sandberg for writing that grant and submitting that to KMTA on behalf of the Gerwood Trails Committee. Switching over the roads, spring breakup has been slow this year and cool and rainy. So it's put us about three weeks behind our normal process. But we have been able now to get out and get going on spring grading. The grader was out Friday, then we'll be back tomorrow. And then we're going to try to get the initial grade in, basically tie the shoulders in. And and then once everything kind of settles and melts out, we'll go to full spring grade and get the calcium chloride out when we look like we start to hit that stretch of dry period, especially for June. So we'll be working on that, so and and going through that. We completed sweeping up all pathways. We have about ninety-five percent of them done. A few areas just finally melted out, so we'll be completing all those pedestrian pathways this week or next and getting that all done out there. But the slow, the slow snow melt delayed us this year and for sure on that one. And then Gunny Sack Road closure, I know there's been some questions about Gunny Sack Road closure. Gunny Sack is a road with a mine of its own and every year it melts out in different ways. And this year it really melted at the top and left a lot of heaving up there. A lot of that area has a lot of clay and peat. And so when it melts, it does different things. We did a bunch of drainage work a couple of years ago and dealt with the pit hole that was in the middle for many years. And now it seems like the water's moved up there. But that has settled out and tomorrow the grader will be on it. We had same problems over on Hot and Tot and also on Sprout in certain sections. So the grader was able to get them to pop open more. And so we'll be working on that tomorrow and hopefully have Gunny Sack reopened by tomorrow afternoon to finish out the drying process. And then major projects, we are pursuing the completion and the removal and replacement of the Moose Meadow Culvert, Moose Meadow Creek Culvert at Lake Tahoe. Western will be starting on that in mid-June and going until the end of July. We'll try to get before the fish window starts August first. And we try to also time it when the creek tends to be the lowest. And so they'll be working on that. That project is a little bit intensive. We have to lower the water line there to put in a qualified fish culvert in that aspect. So so that will take a bid and we'll be working with the residents there who will be affected to make sure they have access to their property while we do that project. But we feel we should be able to get it done in two weeks. And finally, one of the three fish culverts, who we've been talking about probably the last ten years, will get completed and then we can move on to the next two. So so that's everything for major projects. Budget-wise, both parks, fire, road and police, they're all where they need to be at this time of year and right in within budget for for what we planned. So any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, on the bike path there, the gravel, I noticed this year, I believe last year they're using leaf blowers to move some of their gravel. And it looks like you had street sweepers or something on it this year. And is that going to continue? I'd really appreciate the, you know, not having leaf blowers.
So, yes. So in the sidewalks, we do use leaf blowers within Town Square because we can't get a sweeper up onto those three-foot pathways. But this year we did work with DOT because as we, as it's known, the service area plows and sands the bike path in the winter because DOT doesn't have the resources to do it. And so this year we said, hey, let us just take our sweeper down it. We have a vacuum sweeper and we're able to pick those chips back up. And then we're able to actually recycle those chips and put them back into use for next year. Or we can actually put them into road hardening out there for different areas that have these peat bogs. So we were able to reclaim those chips and reuse them. So we made one run down and back and forth, but we can't get too close to the shoulders because we don't want to suck a bunch of grass in. So I think DOT was going to come along with their kick broom and then kick those all off. But, yeah, we used less of the blowers this year. We probably will need to use the blowers for section that hasn't been removed, the gravel, which is basically going out to the hotel because it's too narrow through there for the pickup broom to go through and work that section.
Thanks. Just before we move to the other, I just wanted to sort out the.
Oh, jeez, I got a bunch of people wanting to get in. Sorry.
Okay.
Just, that's not a timber line, maybe.
Actually, it's an agenda item tonight that we'll discuss, but it is something that we're looking at and we'll give an update to the board on that. But we are looking at possibly presenting to the board an option to pave timber line from the church to Alpina and then up to Loveland in the worst section of the road.
Right to Vale?
Vale, excuse me, to Vale up to Loveland. Yes. So from the church, Alpina, you'll go past Vale and then up to Loveland.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm not seeing any, so we will move on to public comments. Public persons offering public comment, state their full name, address. Public comments limited to three minutes per person on items that are not on the agenda. Would anyone like to make a public comment tonight?
Yes, sorry. This is, so this has nothing to do with GBOS business per se, but I wanted everyone to know that the redistricting board met today and approved the plan that the courts had put in as the interim plan. So we are now officially in the same districts that we were in, that we voted in the last election, which is to say not with Eagle River. And I also wanted to let everybody know that part of, I have the whole court decision. If anybody wants a sleep aid for tonight and or if anyone wants to get more, they're welcome to it. But long story short, one of the really interesting things to come out of it is that the court defined communities of interest and we now qualify as one. So hopefully we will not have the same issues we did before with being paired with Eagle River. But they did say that continuity is not as big of an issue. That was one of our arguments, but we have, they did say continuity and compactness are more important than socioeconomic concerns. And we qualify as a community of interest.
What is a community? It's something we've got to pay attention to in later time?
We are a, we, we count as a community in of ourselves. So you cannot just put us into another community and, and, yeah. So we have to be considered as a community that's voice, that its voice needs to be considered rather than, oh, this group of people and this group of people adds up to the right number.
I think it's about thirty pages more of that today.
No, I think it's a lot longer to say it than that.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? I'm seeing any, we will move on to all business. We actually have, I think, three very closely related items in front of our space. We can take them in with the, let's start with item. Actually, I'm going to ask you to take chair for items four, five and six.
Okay.
Want to do that?
All right. It's number four is review the remaining Holton Hills questions regarding the letter to HLB with Slaver. Remaining questions, copy of formal bifurcation agreement and less redacted area map.
Yeah, so we, at the municipal managers meeting, which was on the twenty-fourth of April, Lance Slaver was at the meeting and answered a lot of our questions verbally. There were a few things that were promised as follow-up and we haven't seen them yet. And I believe Kyle spoke to Lance earlier today and he gave us just a quick update on.
Sure. Lance was quick to say and he apologized, it fell off his radar. And so we went through all the questions again and then I sent him a link to the quarterly meeting so he could just review the discussion. And he's actually been in Fairbanks dealing with his mother. So he said he would write the letter to us this week or get the questions back to us this week. And so we'll move that to your, I think you have a special meeting here at the end of the month. And so we will move that agenda item to there.
Okay, thank you. And on the, on the second item, the resolution, the, that was going to be a joint response from both planning and HLB, I believe. And again, I also posted an email as follow-up to Kyle. So commented and reminded that that's, you know, not heard anything back from either party that we have chased them up. I'm going to go straight to the, sorry.
Okay, well, you answered the next one of number four. So agenda of number five, LUC twenty-three zero-three dash zero-seven, Formation and Vote to Members to the Standing Committee to Address Housing and Economic Stability, HLB Report of Plan and Financial Mechanisms to Support Residential Development. This item was from LUC, but I thought when I read this, we were addressing an hour ago. Would you like to give that update, Kyle, or would you like to for number five?
Sure. So the GBOS has had a previous special meeting from six to seven. And during that meeting, they reviewed and selected the economic, housing and economic development committee, which they still are going to hammer in on a name. But they did choose a committee of seven out of, was it ten?
It was eleven.
Eleven applicants that were received by last Friday's deadline. And so those chosen were Brett Welbanks, Brooke Lavender, Tim Cabana, Aaron Eker, Crystal Hoak, Matt Schekner and Tomas Metting.
Thank you, Kyle. That's, okay, number six, again, the item, this is the Gerwood Industrial Park Concerns, power, plating and others. I have an update on that, Mike.
That also fell into the discussions with HLB, reminded Lance and HLB that they were going to, they had promised to help schedule a meeting between GBOS, HLB and the permanent leaseholders there. So we will, we will still have some dates and circulating that with the full, full list of everybody.
And I can give some update on that. We do have HLB staff coming down Thursday to meet with us. And and they do have a new staff member, so we're trying to get them familiar with the issues that are happening down there. We actually will be meeting with Chief Weston to talk about the training center down there that they would like to develop. And then we are, we've given the notice to proceed for the electrical power for the service area road maintenance lot for the design work on that. So that that has started.
So that's for the corner.
That's for the corner, yes. That's what GBOS approved at the quarterly meeting.
Thank you, Kyle. Anything else on that item number six?
No, I think there were a couple of items, there was just one item on the number five.
Okay.
The, the second point, that HLB will develop land. So HLB did produce a report based on a resolution from the Assembly requesting to do two things. One is to provide an inventory of land in good, might be suitable for lower cost housing development. They produced a list and an initial analysis of each of the sites. And the second part was to try and work on financial mechanisms to support residential development. I have not seen, I don't believe that item, I can't get onto their draft two thousand twenty-three roadmap. So to preempt a later discussion, that's something we may, we probably will remind them about. Again, there's no, I think the discussion on that first part on the inventory is going to happen again at the HLB Advisory Commission meeting next week and next Thursday.
And Margaret, that's very helpful.
So I just wanted to point out that part of the report that HLB did, did identify some financial mechanisms. So that is in this packet, it might not be as comprehensive.
I think that was a, that was a starting point, please admit it.
Thank you, Margaret, for that information. And going back there, thank you, Mike, for finishing number five. Okay, and I promised to number six. Anything else on number six? Would you like to share back for number seven?
Okay, thank you. We do need a gap. That was right. Item number seven, discuss an update of capital projects list.
Sure. So we've had this on here and the request from the board was to prioritize and then give updates. And then, you know, we hadn't kept a list of projects we had completed, but I did remove that from this list. And so it is split into roads and parks in the different departments that we have in fire. And so I'll start with roads first, parks, excuse me. A large capital project, three large capital projects we're working on right now is the replacement of the hand tram with the suspension bridge. We do have funding in hand for both the design and the build. The build is still yet to be determined. By getting to that thirty-five percent sign, design, then we can have an engineer estimate to see if the one point, the one point two million that we have available through a state grant, we'll be able to complete that build there. But we do have the five hundred and twenty-five thousand for design. And at this point, our design, our costs are just around two hundred and fifty thousand. So we should, should have a little extra money coming out of that that we could put towards construction there. And then we are working on the Lions Club Pavilion, which is looking for a build to be about a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand. And then we are uh working on the Lions Club uh pavilion, um, which is looking for a build to be about a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, and that does include the design work. Um, and design is complete and we are working with them and it's the wishes of the Lions Club to dedicate, dedicate the pavilion to John Trautner. And so they are being partners and helping to fundraise with that. So we may circle back to G B, uh, to the board, the group board supervisors to discuss uh uh matching funds um to help build that um in twenty-four. So um, Alliance Club is getting organized on their side for fundraising at this time. Um, the things that are beyond that uh is master planning and uh, this has been on the project for a while. And we've kind of put this on the back burner as we finish the trails plan, but a master plan for Aliaska Playfield Parking Lot and Conic Storage Area. Um, you know, we have some uh definitely some issues with that area, especially the, the soccer field um and having poor drainage um and only really usable um during the driest parts of the season. Um, so and then the parking has always become an issue there with the more popularity in our trail systems, both winter and summer, that is sort of a critical area to figure out. So uh, master planning uh would be the first step. And then part of that would be putting that together and having a master plan for Gerwood Park. Um, there's quests for uh development of services in the park. So it's probably a master plan that's both together. And then we can get started on um actual physical improvements for both facilities um out there. And then eventually redevelopment of the Aliaska Playfield area. Uh, the other one is the development of a dog park and trailhead parking for the Lower Ditterod. So combining that and and building a uh dog park down there um to alleviate the pressure that the ball field turns into a dog bar, dog park and uh causes conflict of users. Um, so looking at that, we definitely need a trailhead down there as as trails become more popular. And so having more adequate parking down there uh will be something for the future. Um, we keep in there the resurface of the tennis courts um as that's sort of an ongoing maintenance. Uh, we will be doing quite a bit of work on the tennis courts this year to deal with the existing surface. So um, we hopefully can prolong uh the resurface for another couple of years. And then the batting cage, um, we keep that as a capital project. I don't think we'll need service area funds for it. We can, we've uh fundraised uh so far for it and we'll continue to do that uh to put those in. So so those are the projects right now in front of us uh that we've been on our list for quite a while and we're trying to knock off for capital projects within parks. Oh, before I move on, any questions from the board?
Yeah, Chris, I think uh, I don't know if this is gaining any traction, but there is the possibility of maybe trying to swap this playfield zone for a lot here instead because though that area has drainage issues, it might be more buildable than anything in the floodplain area here. And it might make sense to concentrate our ball fields here, but I don't, I don't know if we want to wait that. I, I don't know if that question is gaining traction, but I certainly agree a little bit. I assume we would wait on that a little bit while we then planning into in those fields where they as is.
Well, that may be come out in the planning process. If you combine those two parks together, then the planning process might say, hey, we want the soccer fields down here and we do that. Really, I think when it comes down to up there at Aliaska Field, there's a better grading of those soccer fields and a better drainage around it. Um, you know, that used to be the old Aliaska maintenance slots up there and then soil is just thrown over it. And so you can actually still see the the old foundation of the, the shop used to be in the middle field behind the cotton wood because it sits nice and high and flat and everything else drops away from it. So so I think it's a matter of if that's the location for it. It's pretty sunny up there. So there's, there's, there's benefits to it. So I, I think that's a process of when we do start a master planning process for this park and that park facility up there, because we're going to still need the parking space up there that may rule itself out and say, we don't want the soccer field there, we put it down here.
Thank you.
Okay, um, you're going to go ahead.
Yeah, so we'll go into roads. Uh, so uh, these fish passages that I spoke about have been on our list for a long time. We have the complete design docs done. We've been chasing grants uh for this, most likely the, the most recent, the SIP or the C T P, one of the acronyms. Um, and we did not get success with that. So we will continue to choose and chase those. Uh, Aliaska Creek is a fish creek, so we have to build the passages to fish standards. Um, and so they get expensive that way. Uh, but the one we are going to tackle this year is like, is uh Moose Meadows at Mount, at Lake Tahoe, um, and get that completed. So we'll only be down to Davos or to Davos and Mount Hood for Aliaska Creek, um, which are pretty critical. They're at the end of the Aliaska Creek drainage. All that drainage is draining out all of um, uh, Aliaska Resort up there, the bowl. And so uh, we definitely want to get those replaced here and and shorter than a longer time. So um, we'll continue to chase funds for that and continue to save money through our capital contributions to make that work. So so those are the first three projects there. Um, the other one is rehabbing the pedestrian safety corridor um along Alberg. So that's the bike path going out to the resort. Um, we want to uh uh repave that. And right now I am looking at that with Western um to see if we can do it under a maintenance contract. Uh, they're very capable. They just paved all of Alberg. It turned out well. And um, they have full equipment and expertise to do that. So we may try to pursue that this year if we can make it work. So uh, you may be hearing an update from us. I'm waiting on them to uh give me a quote for that and uh we may address that as we move forward. So um, and then power to the industrial lot, we're working on that right now. Is there, and then uh, the pave Alberg Pass uh Vale intersection uh of Vale Hill to the Love Line Interse- Loveland Intersection and get that done. So I just met with the design team on uh Friday. We walked the whole corridor all the way down to Alpina and uh discussed that. And um, they will be giving us proposal that I'll bring back to the board. And part of that will be coming up with design and a cost estimate and basically having a shovel ready project that we can go seek funds with. I think that's our uh weakness right now is we don't have a shovel ready project. So when we apply for grants, everybody's, it's very vague about numbers and what design looks like and things like that. And we want to have something that's been approved and supported by traffic engineering. And uh, and then that way we could be more successful chasing grants and 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 funding sources. And then the other ones for the long term is uh storage garage at the road maintenance lot and industrial. Uh, right now we have the old Glacier City Hall, which functions as both parks and rec and um, the uh road maintenance uh garage in the winter. Uh, that building is very old. We keep it together with uh gum and tape and uh, but it works, but it's not fully functional for a real true maintenance operation, especially when these guys are welding and it's raining sideways and they're, we're holding up tarps so they can get the wells done um in that aspect. And then, so that's a long term goal of building something down there and making that and developing, maturing that lot into a true uh street maintenance uh storage facility down there. And then eventually a coverage storage sand. What we're looking to do is a coverall uh fabric structure over our sand. So we don't have to tarp it every fall. And then um, basically just rip that tarp up as we break into it through the winter, trying to get the sand out for those those New Year's events and things like that. So working on that and that side. And then uh, excuse me, there's some bad spelling in here. This is what happens when you use Excel. Um, build the general savings. So just ongoing savings that Gerwood's ready for capital expenditures and storms and events. You know, we handled the uh last Halloween storm well because we had reserves. And so uh, just keeping that practice going and making contributions to our savings accounts that we're prepared for for the unknown and also for the capital improvements. You know, in the last ten years, we put a lot of capital uh improvements, Town Square, Eggloft, Olympic Mountain Road, Canyon of Alberg. Those are expensive things you have to maintain with storm systems. They, they'll eventually fail and we'll need to replace them. So Gerwood needs to be prepared how to do that and how to deal with it going forward. So, so we'll continue to work on that. Roads, any questions?
Good. I'm curious, um, is there, is there a transfer station or A W W you have gas running to it? Are those lot? When you're talking about power, you're talking about electricity, but getting gas to them, is it? Do we already have gas running down that way?
Yes, uh, there is, uh, yes, um, because the Halloween storm exposed the gas line when the whole storm went out, but uh, there is gas to the first five lots. They're developed that were plotted out in the industrial park there off the paved road. And so there is gas actually right across from us. There's electricity right across from us and there's telecoms right across from us. But when they developed it, they didn't bring it over to the street maintenance lot. So that's what we're trying to get resolved now. So, so all those things are there. So the first five tenants or the first five owners of those lots, they have all those resources at hand.
Cool, thanks. Uh, you're going to come up, just come for fire?
Yeah, so we'll cover fire. Um, and uh, uh, thanks to the chief seaters, there, there's, they've been very aggressive on tackling their high priority needs. And so Utility forty-one and Chief forty-one, these are the, uh, actually you can see them both out here, red trucks um are in the process of being replaced. They're waiting on the uh accessories now, uh canopy, uh lights, uh sirens, radios, computers uh to come in to finish those out, but they will be replacing the um, pretty much the first response vehicles that are on scene. Right now it's two, three Suburbans and two of the Suburbans are almost twenty years old. Um, so those are coming in, so that process is going. And then tonight we'll be talking about the replacement of Engine forty-one. Um, and uh, that's a, that's a uh apparatus now that hits twenty-five years. Usually a good lifespan is twenty. Um, so uh, we are working with A F D who are purchasing five. And then the sixth one would be the Gerwood uh one. And uh, uh, we'll be talking about tonight how we're going to finance and make that work. So so we're uh catching up on some of those large capital purchases for the fire department at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the fire department on the other end? Seeing any questions online from the floor? Thank you. By coverage. Uh, we will now move on to item number eight, Gerwood Forest Fair twenty-three. Understand that this is sloppy.
Yes.
You have an update and then we can move to.
Karen will be at your special meeting at the end of the month. She had a work meeting tonight, so she couldn't attend. So um, so we will postpone that for the next meeting.
Yeah. I move to postpone this item to our meeting on the twenty-fifth.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And uh, take this uh by a cent unless I hear an objection. Not hearing any objection. Uh, the item number eight is postponed to the twenty-fifth. And number nine, timberline ruined improvements to Alpina and the Love Land Intersection. We've kind of covered this. Do you have anything else out there?
Correct. Now, we're just be, uh, the next item ahead of you will be a proposal from uh the potato company with uh the do the work to come up with the design and engineer estimate.
Hey, thank you very much. Any questions on that? Move on to item number ten, uh, group fire rescue request for not to exceed thirty-five hundred dollars from five four oh six account to purchase a two place trailer for the fire department. Um, if you're taking this.
I think she's a little, I think um, they did have a part road magnates crew destroying one of your trailers earlier this year as they're maybe snowed and uh, so they uh, um, ponying up some money, I think fifteen hundred dollars, I believe, to cover the cost of the of of a used trailer. And so this is to keep the rest of the cost for, cover the cost for the trailer.
So uh, the number here on the agenda is wrong. We would be seeking nineteen hundred dollars uh from the four oh six account to match with the fifteen hundred dollars came from Western to replace the value of the trailer that was uh, was hit um during snow removal. And so um, and up here on the board is an estimate from White Spruce that replaced that trailer. So we'd be seeking the approval of the board to uh use funds to replace that trailer.
Do you hear a motion to?
I move to approve not to exceed nineteen hundred from the four oh six fire department account.
Anyone second?
I'll second it.
Thank you very much. Uh, any discussion on this item? Is that stretch?
Yes.
Okay, uh, not seeing any uh, seeing any hands. Um, move to a vote.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard? Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Our motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Uh, now we've covered all the material everyone's here to uh listen to. Well, I'm sure everyone will leave before we get item twenty. So um, we're going to move on to item twenty now, which we uh, we arranged at the beginning of the meeting. So item twenty is discuss a proposal for these eleven acres of state land, the Gerwood Airport, Figueroa Valley, I'll see about a hundred and fifty short term lodging units, that's some of these. Um, I don't think any of us had any more information than this was on the very short um, public notice, like D O T site, but uh, we can receive, we don't have members of Figueroa, owners of Figueroa Valley on the N L C, uh, probably the audience is online. Um, and uh, I see this one page, Atlanta, which you gave, which has a lot more information in it than the, yes, the public letters did. Um, it's all right with everyone else. I'd like to invite uh, maybe you attempt to uh color in and just speak a little, say a little bit about what this is from your perspective. If you could speak into one of these two mic first.
Can slide right over. Okay, four to you.
Thank you for having me. Uh, my name is Tim Treadwell. I'm here with uh my father, Reed Treadwell, and online we have Andrew Parkner and John Parkner. And the four of us have been working on this project for over a year. Um, we've been members of the Gerwood community since I was born. My, we've had a family cabin on Donner. My whole life, I grew up doing Mighty Mice, skiing at the mountain. I did not do the juniors program, but I have friends that are still in it and coaching it. And I, I see myself as not a resident of Gerwood community, but a member of the community. Uh, the initial idea for this came up at an airshow. I've been going to airshows my whole life and uh, there's always a booth at these airshows where the D O T is offering up state airport land release for lodges, for F B Os. And it's been in my mind to do something like that out in Gerwood for a long time. As I said, we've been working with the state for about a year to put together this application. And it, it got announced May fifth. So this isn't a new idea. There's currently lodges on airport land all over Alaska. Two that come to mind are Betels, Milliamna. And we're all familiar with airports having hotels or lodges all over the country. Um, we are proposing three elements in this application. The first is a hangar that can service itinerant planes and possibly support an air service in the future. Uh, the second is a lodge of up to a hundred and fifty rooms. And the third is an ancillary building that can be both uh center for winter and summer sports on the Gerwood Trail Systems, uh, which will also feature some employee housing. So why now? Why we're doing this now? We see Gerwood is poised to grow over the next decade. We've seen that with the Nordic Spa that just went in, with the news of the resort being on the Icon Pass. The state tourism numbers are up since COVID ended. There's plans for the Aliaska interchange that I heard was thirty percent designed. And we just see that Gerwood is an area to grow. This lodge will allow greater access to Prince William Sound. Uh, my family has been visiting a lodge out in Prince William Sound my whole life. One of the easiest ways to get out there was an F B O from the Gerwood Airport, which no longer exists. So it'll be a place to stay for pilots coming over from all over the state that need somewhere warm to keep their plane in the wintertime. Uh, we also plan to improve Gerwood's safety at the airport and security around the runway. I'm sure people have used the trails down there and seen no trespassing signs. We will work to mitigate the, the security issues on the runway with dogs and kids running up and down the runway. And we also will advocate for additions of navigation aids at the airport. Some uh lights in there is crucial for pilots flying in the evening. Uh, but why we're here tonight and why we plan on being a future Gerwood Board of Supervisors meetings is we want to listen to the community when we're in this planning process. This uh public notice is going through June twelve. And we, after that, we're in the design period, we're in the permitting period. And we're going to listen to everything that you all have to say, so we won't be a bother. Uh, we don't have any plans to put pressure on the community for employee housing. One thing with being on state airport land is we have to stay within the D O T and the F A A regulations. And one of their regulations is no permanent housing on airport land, but we will have housing for our employees. Uh, we do support the D O T to reopen the Gerwood Transportation Plan next year in twenty-four, twenty-five. I've dug through the transportation plans from two thousand and one, all the way back to the transportation plan in nineteen ninety-six. And we, we know that there's talks or plans of a possible rail loop through the valley. We would support that too. So I, I brought a letter in the back of the room, which is a one pager introducing. So I, I brought a letter in the back of the room, which is a one pager introducing who we are and what our vision for the project is. But I, I'm here to open up a dialogue with Girdwood and to, to say three things. We, we don't want to have a negative impact on the neighborhoods. We've seen what's going on in town with the neighborhood and the housing. We've worked with the DOT on multiple options to ease the traffic and through Mount Hood Drive. And we'll work with the community to see which option is, is the best option to get people through the lease site. Any design that we come out with, we plan to work with the trail system here in Girdwood, the trail community. And we, we don't want to mess up the view shed around Moose Meadows, around those trails, around what we know as beautiful Girdwood. But we also want to, is secure the airport facility, so, so it's a safer place for the community. And we see that there's, there's a shortage of places to stay in Girdwood now. We feel that this project will put an ease on the community for places to stay and may, may help out with the tug of war between Airbnbs and private rentals and everything that we've seen over the last decade. So as, as I said, I'm here today with Andrew and he and I are putting together this project. We have the handout and back and we're happy to field any questions. Or if you have any longer thought out questions, you can email us at info@g glaciervalleylodge.com. So Andrew is there on, on the screen. And if you have anything to add to that, Andrew, feel free.
Yeah, Tim, I thought that was a, 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 a great introduction overview of who we are. And like you said, we're, we're here to listen and hopefully incorporate all your guys' concerns. Just a little bit about myself, I, I'm from Homer originally. I think some of you may be familiar with my family's attachment, Landen Resort in Homer. And, and we hope to bring that legacy and that, that quality here to, to Girdwood as well.
Thank you. One thing I, we did invite probably two mates, anyone from DOT Aviation. I don't, I suspect they're not online, but I'd like to just, in case somebody is from DOT. In case somebody else is from DOT, I know we have at least one DOT person here from a different department. If anyone is online, I can identify themselves from this, because I have a lot of few questions about process. Not hearing any? Okay, maybe I can, I can open it up to the board, but I'd like to start with one question. The, the way, way DOT is expressing this project, there's a 30-day comment period. And then DOT does its own stuff and we find out what the answer, we find out what emerges at the end. And there's no other public engagement from, from DOT itself. That's not how you described it and that's not how you describe it down here. So how, how do we measure these two things? But DOT says there's just an initial discussion about the lease and that's it.
So the 30?
Or engagement?
The 30-day period is just to grant the lease with the state. And then it will open up conversation with design, with permitting. And this is just the option to build. It doesn't give us the building permits, so to say. This is just the option to use that land. So that, once we go through this 30-day period, we plan to open the conversation to everyone in the community to go through the design phase.
That would be a voluntary action on your part. My understanding of DOT's position is they assert that on airport land, municipal law, municipal land use does not apply. And they can do their own thing, do not have to follow any local processes, do not have to talk to the community at any capacity. So you're saying you voluntarily do this?
That for our lease site, yes, we're opening up that conversation and we are permitted to do that. We are allowed to do that and DOT is, from what they've told us.
Okay.
We can design around the community's recommendations.
Okay. I mean, I, I, we should also acknowledge there is a, while that's DOT's assertion, I don't think that's actually been proved in the court yet. So, and I know there are questions which have come up around that statement. So I believe there is a, a legal opinion being prepared now on this very question. So it may be that it is subject to land use, which brings my second question. The, there is a Girdwood Airport land use zone in our plan and in use, in municipal code. And that allows the basic airport operations to occur there. It does not allow accommodation, does not allow lodging units. It would allow hotel, hotel, any of these other things you're proposing. So if it followed through our local process, then you'd be able to have a hangar and airport facility, you know, aviation facility, strip aviation facilities. But I don't believe land use code would actually permit the uses you're talking about. So how would you, again, how are you going to tie these two things together? The local process says you can't build what you're proposing. And yet you also said you want to follow through the local process. So there's just this conflict and I don't understand.
Yes, yes. Well, we are going through the DOT state process for obtaining the lease and obtaining the land. Once we go into the design process, there is the aviation component, which is the hangar and the itinerant airport parking and tarmac area. And a non-aviation component, which would be the lodge. It is on DOT state land, but it, it would be considered a non-aviation component. And that's where we can work with the community. And we've, we've talked to DOT about this. We've talked to, this is our first meeting with you all, but we plan to have many more and, and shape our design about around the best fit for the, for Girdwood and for Mount Hood Drive neighborhood.
Okay, I might come back, but I'd like to open up to the board if there are any other questions from board members. So I'll open up to the, to the community. Anything else to question, please?
You know, when projects like this comes, my phone rings. And so we've got a lot of questions related to this. And, and I do have the same share of the same concerns as a lot of the questions I hear. But Mount Hood is at its best a rural standard road. And it's a very tight residential area. So I think the impacts that 250 rooms would have would be substantial. And I think those are concerns that need to be addressed. One of my larger concerns is drainage. And when the airport, air, the hangar condo went in down there, which is the new complex, that changed the drainage pattern down there, whereas that slope used to head towards the taxiway, out underneath the taxiway into Glacier Creek. Now all that flow comes directly down and then travels all the way down and then actually creeps through the neighborhoods there on the culvert that we're just talking about tonight we're going to replace. So, so we have strong concern about additional flow coming out of Moose Meadows. That 11 acres would pretty much catch all of Moose Meadows now. And the design would be a concern to us as to the way that flow goes. And it's being all sent down Mount Hood to be shoveled through the neighborhood. That's a substantial impact, especially during a high water event that we're concerned about. So we are requesting that if you do get into the design phase to try to get the water to Glacier Creek as fast as you can. Avoid trying to send it down to Alieska Creek and then out that way as we see the increased flow becoming an issue.
Thank you. Shannon, Brian, Lee?
Hi, thank you. I really appreciate that you're all here at the meeting and opening the conversation, so thank you for that. I was going to mention what Kyle just said, but I appreciate that you're part of our community or connected to our community because I think that allows you to understand the importance of those meadows right there to our community. It's one of the few Class A wetlands that we have. There's just a few spots that are undevelopable. And from what I saw on your mock-up, it looks like a chunk of that meadow would be extracted in order to put your hotel. And then that would actually take away from our community and take away from something that people come here from, you know, encourage to use. And so is there another place that that hotel can go rather than take away something that we all find joy in? So that's my question. You don't have to answer it right now, but just think about that.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Shannon. We have been looking at other areas on Girdwood State Airport State Land. We, we identified this area as a suitable one. Once the public comment period is finished and if the lease is granted, we will look into best placement of the lodge to not affect the view shed.
Just to add two things quickly, Tim, as well. I think it was Shannon pointing out the, the beauty of those meadows. I certainly agree with you. You know, my, my grandfather, Stumpy Faulkner, you know, the, the trails there are, are named after him. And I definitely appreciate, you know, the, the passion that you share for keeping it as is. And, and we definitely intend to do that. The second thing I wanted to point out is I think you referenced the DOT drawings that are online. I just wanted to clarify that those are not our designs. Those are just for reference and concept that the DOT has provided. So, you know, once we get to design, we certainly will consider, consider, you know, the points that you've brought up as, as well as others and our final placement of any improvements.
Thank you. Could I add one more thing? Yeah, just, yeah, it's more than the view shed. It's the nature of wetlands. And as Kyle mentioned, the drainage, if you're going to be, not that you are, but if it were to that level that is on that plan, if you were going to dig out the wetland, then that's going to affect the drainage of an important ecosystem as well as one of our prime skiing areas. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw Lou, you'll hammer this up briefly. Do you, do you have a comment for a question?
Yeah, I, I kind of gave up on it, but this is for Tim, if he doesn't mind. Could, Tim, could you elaborate a little bit about what, when you were talking about the no trespassing signs? Because that's a very popular hike to do the, you know, for the Girdwood Circle Walk or whatever on a Sunday. But could you elaborate a little about what, what, how you're gonna, like with the dogs and the kids? Are you going to build a fence? Or is that just going to be a no-go zone for pedestrians? Thank you for taking my question.
So yes, we, we have considered both options. One of our comments from DOT when we were going over the lease application was dogs and kids on the runway. And they, they really want to mitigate that. So we have looked into fences. We have looked into, to access gates for, for airplanes from the tarmac side. All of the above, even game cams to catch trespassers.
I think that's a warning to you, Lewis. Okay, Kelly, please. Do you actually, do you want to come up? You're probably too far back to be caught, tapped you by the mic.
And I'm so quick. All right. Okay, I'm going to break them down one in 10. Just, is your plan to extend the taxiway to the threshold? So we don't have the back taxi on 2-0? Because I'm a little worried with more aviation, it's already a bad deal.
Yeah.
And so is that kind of in your base plan to just eliminate that whole conflict?
It, it is. We, we have area for tarmac, for the hangar and for itinerant airplanes outside. We have not done a whole design on the runway 2-0.
Yeah. But I think to get to your lot, you basically have to extend the taxiway anyway. So it's just a hop skip to take it to the runway.
Correct.
Because increased traffic would be. And then how many stories do you foresee the lodge being just at this stage?
We haven't set a plan. There is a height maximum on the DOT area for runway visibility. So we have to adhere to that. I believe, Andrew, you have the, the height maximum for that? I don't know it off the top of my head, 50 feet?
Well, it tapers away from the runway. So depending on, you know, where you're, you're talking about, it varies.
And then in the, you know, when the airport development plan, LALA, it says, you know, that the airport land isn't well-suited to hotels because of noise. Do you guys have a plan to like where the, the hotel guests don't get mad at us for flying our airplane? Or like to, you know, that's a, that's a known conflict.
Yeah.
Like obviously you're building on airport land. I'm guessing you're building in a mitigation of sorts?
Yeah, we, we have thought about ways to address that. I mean, even going so far as putting up sound windows in the rooms. But it, it is something that we plan to address. I know there's issues with that on, on Lakewood, the lodge there and the hotel on Lakewood.
Oh, like the lake?
Yeah, the lakefront, though that they have some, some safeguards for noise. So yes, that's something we will consider.
Yeah. And then is your view to, to do upgrades to Lakewood along the airport? I mean, that's one of the worst quality roads in Girdwood, second only to Timberline. Sorry, Mount Hood.
Mount Hood, yes.
Lakewood, Mount Hood, the hood, whatever. That road, I mean, it's barely drivable. I guess, is your view to, to pave it, to rely on other people to do that kind of? What's your, what's your view there?
We, we've talked to DOT over. One thing with the application is we, we submitted multiple options to access the lodge. And paving the road is a possibility. We do have to do a traffic plan for how to access the lease site.
And then I'm going to cap it here. In the Girdwood Airport plan, you know, basically Lakewood, Mount Hood, the road
Yes.
extends straight. And then ultimately would connect to Arle, we'll leave that alone. You know, in, in that plan, it's kind of on the west side of that road, the airport side is where you, you know, where lists, you know, hangars and airport, airport-y type things. And on the right-hand side, doesn't have anything. Is, is, is your base plan to keep kind of the left-hand side aviation only and the right-hand side kind of non-aviation? So that we have a clear distinction for adopting kids?
The dog leg is, so that would be quote-unquote the boundary of non-aviation to aviation. We have, we have plans to, there's plans for that dog leg. There's plans to straighten out Mount Hood Road. We have to figure out which is the best for the community and which works the best for our design. But yes, there, there is going to be a component that is non-aviation and a component that is aviation.
And clear boundaries so that we can have. And then your original application, but then not your letter, are we doing a gas station place?
It would be nice to have an FBO there and that, that would be.
To hell with that, yeah, just gas.
Yeah.
Just gas.
It, it is part of the lease was to sell gas. We, we did not apply to be a operator for a fuel sales, but it could something.
Cool. I think those are the things.
Thank you. Doug, did you?
Yeah, there was some discussion about access to the lots. The Girdwood Airport plan.
Actually, Doug, could you, could you come closer to the microphone?
Stand right here, Doug. They'll pick you up.
The Girdwood Airport plan depicts a road from Arleberg, from the hotel.
Yes.
To the north side of the airport. And I assume that was part of the design, but is it forced to not?
If it is built, yes. We, we talked to, yes, I'm familiar with the, the extension. We talked to DOT and they do not have any immediate plans to build out that road. But we do have plans to design around it if it does come.
Well, one concern would be especially during the construction phase when the condo hangars were built, the amount of dirt work that was required was way beyond what they estimated for the project. And for, for two years, side, side dumped trucks were rolling back and forth along Mount Hood Drive, which is a very marginal road for that. It's not paved, it's got a lot of puddles, it's narrow. The, the traffic, the dust, the noise was a real concern to neighbors around the airport. That's a, it is a residential neighborhood. And the access to these lots is, they're the whole length of, of Mount Hood Drive. So it, it doesn't look like the best option to access that side of the airport, especially for a large project like that that involves so much dirt work, so much construction. And then cut bank all across from the new hangars is about 30 feet high. Do you have an estimate of how many thousands of cubic yards you'd have to?
We, we have not done an estimate on, on moving land out there. We do have ideas to mitigate moving out of that land in our design. So not cutting through that hill, so to say. But yes, that is a concern in our head. What's going to happen with that thirty-foot hill? Where the design goes in terms of that. So, yes, that is.
So I haven't had a chance to look at your materials, but the lots that are shown on the airport plan along the parallel taxiway are designated for aviation use. Will they remain?
Yes.
Those aviation are.
Yes, they will.
They show in an apron that's essentially the size of two standard lease lots for forever parking. So that's a big, there's a critical shortage of parking I think airport, yeah.
All right. Yeah, so that will remain aviation, yes.
How many aircraft would your project be able to accommodate for parking?
That's still to be determined into that phase.
Okay, well, thanks. That's answered my questions. I feel so much.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Karen first and then Kate. Karen, go ahead online.
Hi, thank you. So I just wanted to go back to the comments, you know, that Luthy said brought up about access for pedestrians. So I just wanted to clarify, when you talk about dogs and kids on the runway, I mean, I never see dogs and kids on the runway, but if we're talking about the taxiway, that's a different thing. And so are we saying if this goes through and would pedestrians still be able to walk out and walk, you know, to access the Upper Valley? This is another access to the Upper Valley, to Stumpy's Trail and all the meadows and everything. And so I'm assuming you are saying that the entire area would be closed off to pedestrians, especially if the road is going through there?
Not necessarily closed off. We just want to work with DOT to mitigate their safety guidelines on and around the airport. They brought that concern to us when we approached them with this lease and we just want to help them bolster their security around the airport. Not to completely bar it up.
Okay, because, yeah, people are able to drive out there to get to the hotel and people should also be able to walk out there. And I just wanted to bring up another point. I think consideration needs to be made, yes, you know, if this project goes forward, during construction, there might be an impact, but it also needs to be the far-reaching impact of which access is used. A paved road brought over from Arleberg will have huge impact on the meadows and Stumpy's Trail and access to the Upper Valley. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Kate?
Hi, I'm Kate Sandburg and I live in the airport area. And I'm still kind of traumatized from all of the side dumps that went for two years. It was really bad. It was really bad. And I was thinking of all the places that you could build this area. You could, why not Talkeetna, Big Lake, Goose Bay, Seward, Woods Creek, Cold? Why Girdwood? I mean, you said that you like Girdwood. You have it. But there are easier areas or easier airports to do this kind of thing than just Girdwood. So that's a point. Okay. The other thing is, when I write my letter to DOT, I am going to say to them that they are putting the cart before the horse, that what they need to do is they need to follow their tenure plan and then have hotels and they have no infrastructure for what you're talking about. And when you say we'll pay for the paving, the road, I can't imagine that. I can't imagine you doing that. You're going to build, you would build your facility, but you can't pay for all these things. So their plan says they need to, first of all, lengthen out the runway in the next year or two on both sides. That hasn't happened yet. So then they need to remove prees, et cetera, lower power lines. Then they want to pay, in the next six to ten years, they want to pay the existing airport access road. That hasn't happened, of course, and it's going to cost them, they figure $250,000. I can't imagine you paying for that. Then eventually in eleven to twenty years, they're going to construct a new port access road to provide north access. That's a long time away, but it could happen earlier. But they have not done these things to accommodate people like you coming in and trying to build facilities and hotels. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Kate. I think actually those time scales, the airport layout plan, they were based on the original 2005 master plan. So that five years or so.
This is 2020.
Yeah, that's exactly repeat of what was in the 2005 plan. So they're already ten years behind on paving.
But it's still what they.
Yeah, that's right. And they're a decade behind that. Yes, yes. Thank you. Mike, David's on line. Go ahead, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. I had a couple of quick questions. One of them was, what's the estimated increase to flight operations? Whether that's like a daily estimate or an annual estimate or?
To what operations? Repeat that, Mike.
So I'm just wondering what the annual estimated increase to flight operations at the Girdwood Airport is if you acquire a permit and build a lodge and FBO there?
Yes, that's information that we do not have presently, but it's something that we are going to look into. Like I said, we advocate for increase of navigational aids out in Girdwood and that will only great in the traffic at the airport. So it is a study that we need to look into and I agree. Thank you.
And then can I ask, when you talk about making additional, you know, whether we call it transient parking or tie-downs, I'm a pilot who frequents the Girdwood Airport. I think someone mentioned there's a severe shortage of airplane park at the Girdwood Airport. I went down there today and once again, all the tie-downs are utilized. It looks to me like the area you're talking about leasing in the airport master plan was the area that was identified for future tie-downs. So I'm really concerned that if the area identified for future tie-downs becomes used for some other purpose, that there simply will be no additional tie-downs in an airport that may have greatly increased traffic.
All right. Well, there is the aviation component and that will be situated on the tie-down area that you mentioned. And we do plan to have space for current and future traffic to the airport.
Do you envision that that space would be available free of charge, similar to the current space for Girdwood residents? Or do you anticipate charging for people who utilize those tie-downs?
That's yet to be determined.
Let's see. I guess the last thing I'd say, it's challenging in my mind. I called the state leasing office the other day and I know they're not at the meeting to speak for themselves, but what they represented to me is that this may be my only opportunity to comment as a member of the public in this process. I think someone already mentioned, I believe the state is in conflict right now where they have the opinion that their development on state-owned lands may not be subject to local zoning or regulation. And so although there may be a future process, there may not be any guarantee of any of that. And so I don't quite know what my opinion is on the project, but I guess it's challenging because we're a few weeks away from the end of what the state leasing office tells me may be the only comment period. And I guess I'll have to base my comments on the available information and the answers I've received.
Yeah, we plan, once, if the lease is granted, we plan to open up dialogue with the community around design and planning. And as I said before, this public comment period is just to grant the lease. It's not promising any building permits. We still have to go through that study if the lease is granted.
Is it your understanding that you have to acquire municipality of anchorage building permits to build on the land that you're proposing to lease?
No, but it's our understanding that we like to take into consideration any comment from the community.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Actually, you have had, chief, you have had your hand up for a while. Can you come to the front?
So thank you for coming. I know you didn't have to be here and I know we're sometimes.
Can I just interrupt? I'm not sure, is that audible on line? If anyone can comment. Amanda, can you comment if you could here?
Here.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Sorry. Yeah, you are live.
Okay, yeah. So thank you for being here. I know you don't have to be here. I know that airport leasing also sometimes can be challenging. They have security. They've said the same thing to me. Right? Why you need access to the airport? Some facts sometimes. So for us, our comments will come into play when it goes to the state fire marshal for the plan review program. And so just so I want to give you our comments somewhere ahead, we're going to ask for it to be sprinklered. There is the water line right there. The condo building, the condo hangar is not sprinklered. That's amazing to me considering the value of the assets in there. So we'll ask for it to be sprinklered. And then we don't have a ladder truck here, so at an area platform. So we will probably request for, you know, it should be, you know, the over the building, the size of the building is better for us. So those are my main comments. And then also to pair up what Kyle mentioned. If you look at the flood hazard mapping for the Mount Hood area, that does, when we have peak flow going on in Glacier Creek, they do flood. Basements have potential for flooding. And so that's another good reason for having an ability to channel water toward which.
Thank you for that comment. Thank you. I go back online, Weller?
It's the Laurie? Ah, yeah. Thank you. I have two questions. A full-service hotel, you know, with 150 rooms could take upwards of 100 employees to run the rooms, amenities, food and beverage outlets. So my question is, have you made any estimates as to how many employees you will need for what you're building? And then will you be building enough staff housing to house all the employees? Thank you.
So to answer your first question, we have not made any estimates on how many employees it would take for that magnitude of lodge. We do have plans for employee housing and we plan to address capacity of the employee housing when we get to design of the lodge.
Does what you've agreed with, with the DOT, have any limits to how much staff housing you can build?
The DOT and FAA regulations allow housing for staff. They did not cap it, to our knowledge, but that is something that we will look into.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. What's that line, Laurie?
Actually, it's Ed.
Hey, sorry.
The question, oh, no problem. The question I was going to ask just was asked, I was going to try to figure out the percentage of employees that would be displaced in Girdwood and not on-site. And I had a second comment is that the Aliaska pumps for snowmaking are literally right around the corner and just making sure that the water flow would remain as needed for that.
Yes, we are aware of the Aliaska pumps being right there and we plan on addressing all utilities if the lease is granted.
Thank you, Ed. Do you have any follow-up? No, no, same. Do you have a follow-up, David?
No, just making sure that the watershed was considered in the design so that there was enough snowmaking water. I know that the DOT blew up a Beaver Dam this year and it really lowered the water levels and it was getting kind of critical. So just making sure we're not negatively impacting snowmaking.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm laughing with the Debbie Essex night running joke about Beaver Dam.
It's DOT. If you take the paper, it's a huge example.
Yes.
I missed the beginning of the presentation. I apologize. Was there a number or an expected number of employees this might or positions this might generate?
That was just asked. It's a study that we are still planning on doing.
Are you willing to commit to a percentage of housing based on number of employees?
Not at this moment. As I said, our commitment on housing is not to burden the community. We plan on providing housing for our employees, but staying within the DOT and FAA guidelines.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take privilege of just asking a follow-up question to that. When you say the DOT guidelines, what DOT guidelines? I haven't, I just cannot find any. If you could point them.
I lumped them together. It's more FAA guidelines, but I did lump them together.
Okay, I'll follow up. I'm just intrigued. Thank you. We have a question. Sorry.
Good evening. I'm Chase Berenson. Thank you for being here and being online this evening. I was curious, during your introduction, you gave examples of other airports in the state where they do have pilot housing and other lodging on the runway. But at the same time, the DOT leasing office can be kind of fickle about that and I can counter a number of airports in our region that are not allowed to have housing, including Cold Bay, which is under the same leasing central region office where they had pilot housing on the Cold Bay runway. And then through change of personnel in the DOT office, now Cold Bay no longer allows housing. So I'm curious, as a resident, kind of what assurances you have that this will be allowed in the future? I wouldn't want to see a half-built building that gets abandoned when the rules change. And I imagine that would be terrifying for you as an investor into that without that confidence. So I'm wondering what confidence you have that that is going to be a consistent regulation?
It's based on the conversations we've had with state DOT so far. They, as I said before, there's a difference between lodging and permanent housing. They do allow the lodging now from everything they've told us. Permanent housing is a little bit different. You have to be an employee of the airport or of the facility. As far as we've seen, this is not an issue and that's just based off previous conversations with the state. So if we plan to work around any changes with state laws, but from what we've found so far, it does not seem to be an issue. And the two that I mentioned, Betels and Eliamna, they're small fly-in, fly-out lodges and it's what we're trying, what we're trying to do.
Sounds good. Yeah, no, Betels is in the northern region. I think Eliamna might be the central, the same way.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We go to a couple of people online. Deborah first, then Corby afterwards, then I'll come back into the room. Deborah?
Hi, thanks, Mike. I actually live on Mount Hood and I have since 1991. I appreciate Girdwood residents who are my neighbors that actually don't live on Mount Hood acknowledging the enormous impacts in a close, tight neighborhood that this lodge, hotel, everything encompassing what they're presenting, would have. I'd also like to just say that and remind everyone that when the new hangar was being built a few years ago, it was an impact on the entire Girdwood community, especially Aliaska Highway where there were, well, especially at Mount Hood, of course. But Aliaska Highway, there were many complaints of noise, traffic, air pollution, which led to the sides, those dump trucks being like constantly regulated and changing so many ways that they transported the gravel in and went up and down, just even Aliaska Highway. And I just wanted to also say, yes, that the increase of air traffic will 100% over and above impact the entire Girdwood Valley. Thanks, I appreciate the time.
Deborah? Cody, Cody Rice? Please go ahead, Cody.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Thank you.
Thanks. I live on Mount Hood Drive as well, and so, I will echo my neighbor Deb and share her sentiment about traffic here and appreciation for the conversation. I wanted to get clarity on two other things, though. I've heard multiple people asking each of these, but I haven't gotten a straight yes or no that I can understand. And the first one is, will you maintain pedestrian access to the trails? I've heard discussion of fences, of game cams, of trespassing. I'm not clear, yes or no, does the plan intend to maintain pedestrian access to the trails?
Yes, that is our plan. As far as the security measures, that's taxiway and for the runway. But we do plan on maintaining foot traffic on the trails.
Thank you. Second question, I heard back and forth earlier. But are you required to take input from the public at any other stages in this process? It seems unclear to me whether that's actually required or not. I appreciate your offer that you intend to. But it's also important for me to understand if this is the only opportunity to comment. Are you actually required to take input from the community at any further stages? And what, which stages are those?
So, there are, there will be, there may be more stages from input from the community. And that comes in permitting. There may be Army Corps of Engineers, public comment period. We do have to work through utilities with the municipality, and that may be subject to public comment. And we are planning on opening a dialogue with the community. And we'll address that comment internally as well.
Thanks.
Thank you, Cody. I'm going to go to a couple of hands. So, Chris first, then Yola.
Uh, Chris, thanks. 150-room hotel just blows me away. And there's two issues here, and you're putting it on the airport. 150 airplanes are going to come in and stay at your hotel, maybe 300 people. You brought up earlier about parking. There's the airplane parking. You know, I get, I have a hangar down there. I get asked all the time, can I park my lot? You know, and I think all the other hangars down there, they, they're constantly being asked. Because there's just, there isn't enough parking. The state ramp is full. It's absolutely full all the time. And if you can have 150 airplanes or 150 people come in to stay, or up to 300 people, just two people in each room. You know, I think you need to address the parking for the airplanes available. Not just your lodge, but, you know, it has to be, the state needs to address that also. Because what you're doing here, you're trying to do something that's partly or not ethical and also partly non-ethical. And then, the other thing is the road, the access road, you know, which is Mount Hood Drive. And I think that is going to be hugely impacted. I sat through the new hangar construction and all side dump trucks. My hangar got flooded and there was flooding, all the subsequent hangars down below got flooding. Because what happened was, after two years of those side dumps hauling all that gravel. And Mother Nature played a factor, you know, in the fall, it rained here. And one fall, it rained like hell here. And it finally got to the point where I understand that where they're hauling the slurry, the dirt, and it eventually turned into slurry, where they're hauling it to deny any more acceptance of it. So, then they, what they did is they dug a, general contractor dug a giant hole out there. And of course, it filled with water. That wetlands there, that they carved out that mountainside. And I understand you're going to have to carve up your mountainside, put your hotel in there. With like someone pulled a finger out of the ditch, you know, and all of a sudden, combined with another. And that wetlands caused it to be a much bigger problem hauling that so-called dirt out there. So, and so that has to be taken into consideration. It's a huge problem for all the neighbors for the road. I don't know if they even drove the road this year down there, but it was probably, and I'm going to say, in my 40 years here, it was probably the worst I've ever seen it. And I believe that was probably affected by all them side dumps going back and forth, back and forth for two years. And plus, you know, business on the airport is continuing to grow. But that's a huge thing. I think you need to really, really, you know, that should be, these two things should be your first considerations. You know, what are we going to do with the airport parking for the people that use the airport? Not just the people that are going to stay at your hotel. And if you're going to track all this business, where are you going to put the people? Where are you going to put all the airplanes? We don't have any parking now. And just having one little road for 150 rooms, 300 people, I just, I just don't see it. It's going to have to be a giant highway. And then, the other thing is, once you go past that, that new hangar and into your location, they're talking about, you're talking about continuing the taxiway straight through, right? But where's the road go? You know, and trying to mitigate people and airplanes and a road? You know, that just doesn't pense a lot to me. So, that's my points.
None of it, and we'll consider all of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. John, next.
John Renz. I guess, I mean, one thought came up in that I don't believe you intend to have 150 airplanes. This is a drive-to hotel. And the majority, overwhelming majority of guests there will be from the road system. Will that not be true? Because those are remote airports you're talking about there. Only access those places is theirs.
Yes, I hear what you're saying. And it's undetermined at this point, but we're planning for both scenarios.
Yeah. Okay, and that, and that's your statement there. But strikes me as a complete lack of any detail, even though you must have an economic case willing to go forward and present to DOT. So, you have numbers, but you're not disclosing anything here. And it's a little bothersome because I came to this meeting with not pro or con. I wanted to listen. This town deeds a counter to the hotel we have, which does not fit a big part of the market. And I realize that there's not a lot of land options, but the lack of transparency. And yet, you think that the DOT, and I don't know their process, will grant a lease, knowing as little as you've put forward. No discussion of water, no discussion of the hotel. You don't know how big it is. You don't know how many. I don't, I don't, I'd be amazed if they do that. And I would like to see the project well thought through so it can be successful. And that's my generic comment. My question then is, tell us more about the lease. You're going to get a lease of virtually no information. What do you have to commit to? How long can you control that land? If you don't perform one of the standards, give us some sense of what's going to happen. Since nothing's happened to date, what's going to happen after the lease occurs? What's your timetable? And what are your obligations under that?
So, thank you. With the state leases, the timetable is a 55-year lease term. And once, if the lease is granted, we have the annual payment for the lease. Plus, in our case, because it's on airport land, it would be 10% of any sales we make and 5% of any bed, bed tax, so to say.
Now, that means that you don't pay the city's bed tax. You're paying it all to DOT, is that correct?
We may have to pay both, so.
Okay, so that's under term.
Yes. As far as what we've submitted, we're in an open period. One reason why we haven't divulged information is because the DOT is accepting competing leases right now. And we want to be fair to those people that can apply for a lease. We want to be fair to ourselves, too. So, we don't want to give away information that could hurt us in this 30-day period.
How can, okay, I won't go into that. Have there ever been anyone else who's applied at the airport or lodging?
I'm not sure. I don't have the answer to that.
You don't know if there's any history?
I don't have the answer, no.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Young man who looks a bit like Patrick.
Tim, thanks for coming out tonight. So, the question is, was your, a couple of questions. Your intent to be a fly-in lodge, is that your main goal? And then, how did you come up with 150 rooms?
So, we came up with 150 rooms. We capped it at 150 rooms, not to exceed. So, with our design period, it may be a smaller lodge. But our application is not to exceed 150. That was just an internal cap we did with our group. And to answer your first question, yes, we intend to be a fly-in lodge. We will consider this as up from the road system, but the initial plan is for fly-in operations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Lisa?
So, my question for you is, so how many, how many buildings?
A lodge and an ancillary facility.
So, two buildings. So, the ancillary facility is where you're planning to have what?
It's going to be a recreational facility for winter and summer sports on the trail system and employee housing.
Are you building, so what is the phases that you're building this in? Which is phase one and which is phase two?
We have not break, broken it up into phases at this point. Right now, everything, our application has been mentioned. And as far as building, we have not broken it up into phases.
My concern is, is what's going on right now in Alaska in building is that very, very wealthy entities will go in and go, yeah, we're going to do this thing. And they build the thing for recreation and then realize, because building costs are so high, that they have run out of money for the employee housing. So, when we're talking about what you're building and what phases that happens in, that could be really important to this meeting. So, and you really, you know, for your sake, really, really, really consider, these things are very expensive. And for the number of employees you're going to need housing for, you're going to need housing as big as the one that just went up for Aliaska employee housing, which is pretty big. So, that's a challenge that you may have to.
Always, I'll look into that.
But I would love it if you could do that and you could build that. And I would appreciate that in my community.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Mike. Just for a point of order, I'd like to extend this item 30 more minutes because we've reached an hour for discussion.
Give her a second. Second, Ted. It's going to take us 30 minutes. I will take this by extent unless I hear any objections. Okay, no objections. We're extended by another 30 minutes. We've lost some hands online. I can, Cody and Kaylee, the next hands I saw online. If you want to speak to so now, if not, we'll go to Lori.
Hi, this is Lori, long-term resident of Girdwood. And I have a couple of questions for Tim and Andrew. One, will your proposed development be built exclusively on DOT property?
Yes, that is where the lease is, is exclusively DOT property.
Okay. And my second question is, will you be paying municipal taxes on any of this leased ground?
I believe we will.
How long will you be keeping control of this leased ground for the initial development phase? Will it take you, what's your prediction? Is it five, 10, 15 years out? Do you have any estimates on this?
DOT regulations give us two years.
Okay, thank you.
Two years, not before us to get a plan. Correct.
Very clear.
Yeah, so two, two years, not to build, but to come up with a design and build, plan, and come up with all the necessary permits.
Thank you. Okay, again, I'm seeing hands. I'm not sure if the hands are leaving. I saw Cody and Kaylee, both of whom have spoken before, online. So, you go ahead. If not, I will ask if there's any more questions in the room. Right, they'll be speaking online. So, please go ahead, Janet.
Hi, my name is Jackie Graham. And I have been in Girdwood since 77. One of the first people I met here actually was Stumpy. And there's not a doubt in my mind that if John Portner is involved in a hotel, it will be well-run. He does a great job with the One and Homer, and I enjoy going there. I live right near the Moose Meadow, and I'm out there all the time. And when I'm not out there, I'm often walking that airport road, trembling in my boots as we sneak past the no trespassing signs. Scared to death we're going to get arrested. So, suddenly, after several years of anxiety about trespassing, hey, we can have a hotel! And it's like, kind of a shock. My request to you guys is, I was very sad when they built the hangars and we suddenly had to deal with the roof that you can see when you're on the Moose Meadow. We've been looking at the hotel for 30 years. It's kind of far away. I personally think that the Moose Meadow needs to be dedicated as a park for Girdwood. And I would just ask that you listen to the people that have the subdivision and the neighborhood moving up to there. They've gone through a lot. I personally would like to not see any hotel up high. And my understanding is, is that that's where you will be building it, is up kind of on the same elevation as the current Moose Meadow?
Not, not right on the same elevation as Moose Meadow, but in, in the dip there where the new hangar is at the end of the taxiway. It's not at the same elevation level, though.
Would it be higher elevation than the new hangars?
No, because we have to stay within the height regulations on state, our airport land.
Okay, well, that's good to know. The other thing, too, is like, we had some incredible northern lights recently. And I was able to just pop straight out into the, in the meadow to get away from the light pollution. And the meadow was packed. There were so many people out there, also escaping to the dark area to see the northern lights. So, I'm concerned about the light pollution that's going to be generated by a large development over there. How much are you paying for the lease?
It's just over $55,000 a year.
$55,000 a year?
Yes, just, just over that. And then, once development happens, it'll be 10% of any items sold or 5% of any bed used.
Okay. Well, I know it'll be a well-run hotel and I know it'll be beautiful. And I just hope that you consider everything that everybody has said in here tonight. Girdwood's starting to get a bit of a reputation of being a NIMBY, you know? And it just seems to me like it's an odd place to put a hotel. It's not easily accessible. It's going to have a lot of impacts on a lot of people. And Lisa's comment is, I think, the best one I've heard all night, which is, build your employee housing first because you won't have anybody to work there. It's, Girdwood's become impossible for anybody to find anywhere to live. Goodwood's become impossible for anywhere, anybody to find anywhere to live. So, and thank you, by the way, for showing up to this meeting. I know that you didn't have to be there, as somebody pointed out, and, um. I think it's very impressive that you have.
We we plan for this to be the first of many.
Yeah, brave, much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Brian, that's me. Right online, Brian? You go ahead.
You're Mike.
I think we've lost you. Thank you, Brian. Okay, um, I think we've, uh. Brian comes back, I think we've, uh, probably got to the end of the general public comments. Um, so. Like I say, we do have this item in front of us, it's in our business, we can act on it. We have. Again, I think, um, Mike Davidson said the, uh. I think the DOT's argument is that, you know, we haven't been due the 12th to make any comments we want, and that's it. That's the only opportunity in any formal way. Um, I'm not very agree with that, but that's certainly the DOT's position for them. So, um, I would entertain a motion that we perhaps should act on this, no? Say anything? I would entertain a motion that we perhaps perform some action on this item till next officially. Since we may only have until June the 12th to make, that may be the only opportunity for the comments.
Yeah, I I have corrected about that. Um. We we do have a, uh, a request from land use to officially ask for a delay in this. Not that we're granting or anything, but so we actually have two issues, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but maybe, I mean, that would be an action, for example.
Okay, well, we maybe start there.
Yeah.
Hello, can I, so I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, approve land use's request. And then we act on the land use's request to, on this event, a letter asking for a delay in this, so that you can have our new business cycle. And one more second.
One more.
Yeah, that means.
You have a second?
A second, Jen first.
Okay, and discuss your motion. So I would say probably a little bit more than just, um. The the issue of having a second meeting, there's a lot of very fundamental questions here. Don't know, um, whether this is the only opportunity to comment what the municipal position is. Um, I haven't heard that clearly articulated yet either. So I think we need a little bit of time to understand what the, um, what Anchorage is, Anchorage Planning's position is as well. This, uh, on this development, because as I said, we have this fundamental contradiction under Title 21. The proposal mostly is uses which are not allowed in that. Um, so if you go through the municipal process, you're asking for something that cannot be done under code. Um, so. There must be a reliance on the fact that it doesn't come under municipal process. And therefore, there's no requirement for any of the other public engagement. So there's this kind of slight contradiction, which I'm struggling with. So we've, a little bit more time to tell us to try to answer some of these basic questions.
It also sounds like there might be an argument for a more detailed letter. So because one aspect of letters asking for more time to meet our community structure and meeting structure, but the other one might be. I don't know if we can ask DOT to whom we ask some of the questions that you're talking about, I mean, you're absolutely right, because it's discussed.
Yeah, I'm not sure we're asking those, I think we're just saying we need time to address these issues.
Okay, all right.
30 days.
I would like to know the answer to the question, is this truly our last shot at it? So we could ask that.
Yeah, we'll get it, he's asked.
Okay.
I think I get the sense of what the, uh, what the letter contains. Any other questions for this?
Not a question, but thank you, Jennifer, for your motion and everything we're hearing tonight. And great questions from the community and concerns helps all this new information in tighter than 30 days, really, to June 12th. And we don't have official meetings before then, but we have a special meeting the 25th, so maybe we can add that to that meeting. And then, um. Perhaps it still asks for an extension, but have a more wing letter.
Um, any other discussion or those motion? See, oh, sorry, me, go ahead.
Thanks, so my name is Nate Treadwell, on a cabin, 397 Diner. Um. Uh, John may have something to add here too, and I I could just tell you, first off, thank everybody for the comments that we heard tonight. Uh. Uh. I think my friends have spoken and they've asked questions that I would ask. Okay, the weird situation is this. Uh, if you're leasing airport land from DOT. Uh. They piss you a whole lot in a private bidding process. That if it's all out there and somebody else comes and bids $1 more, they get the property, you don't. Okay, so so that's, that's the, the second thing is that every issue that's come up tonight. Wetlands, hydrology, uh, view shed, light pollution. All of those things are things that we would be paying intelligent designers. To work on. It would cost lots of money. The bid that we're asking for with the city right now will cost, or with the, with the state. Will cost us at least $100,000 just for the chance to go spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to get those other issues dealt with. And if we don't have the. The option on the lease, which will cost us $100,000, we can't really answer the questions that have been asked. What we've committed to you. Is to be back here. And, um, you know, the impending fight, uh, Mike, that you've talked about between. Uh, DOT and the state. DOT has a process whereby if they don't give you the lease, then it's up for grabs for anybody to go bid for it. So that's why we ask for support to get the lease. And why we're making the promise to you to work with you in a public process. And frankly, there there are issues where the city has confidence and the state DOT may not. And they can work out an agreement between them too. You know, it's, uh, uh, so, so I just want to say there's more options than, you know, we've already said this is not the last time we're here. Uh, and. Uh, I I think what we're saying is that that we're not even going to, I, I mean, you can nip this right now in the bud and just say you don't want it. And DOT could say, yeah, and goodbye, or, or, and and DOT could kill it. Or we could have a planning process, which is what we're, what we're promising you. So that's, that's why we're asking to go forward. Uh, we're not asking to go forward to say approve the project, I don't even approve the project. I'm John's neighbor, I don't, you know, you talk about airplane noise, you talk about all these kinds of issues. Uh, we want to plan a a nice addition to the community. That's going to take. Engineers to 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 look at the wetlands, uh, wildlife people to look at the beaver pond nearby. Uh, hydrologists to look at, making sure we don't have those, those, those other problems. But we can't go and spend that kind of money if we don't know we've got at least an option on the land. And it's not a cheap option on the land. So, uh, DOT can tell you that you have nothing else to say about it. I'm telling you that you do, because I live in this community and I know you, and I had, and you're all friends of ours. So we'll be back.
Thank you. Um, I mean, what we're actually discussing here is whether we're going to send a letter to DOT asking for more time.
Sure, and the only issue is more time is that, is that it means that six other weeks could be added to.
I know there's that.
And that's not very fair to us.
That's it. Um, any other comments in the board or the community? Okay, is, if there's clarity on the, I'll try and restate the motion. Motion is that we will write a letter to DOT requesting an extension on public comments. Uh, so we can both go through our normal local process of having two meetings with consideration. And to give us some time to address some of the other questions. Uh, so that way we'll ask them as well about their opinion, whether this is the only opportunity.
Are we going to put a date on there and an extra time?
We probably need until the end of June. Yeah, well, yeah, so that would be to the end of June, I'll probably have, the rest of us, is that 20 days? 18 days. Okay, um. Any other comments, otherwise we will move to a vote, we'll vote, I think.
Ready? Breonna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Uh, Jennifer Wengard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Uh, I suppose I should say before, it's clear that we do have a special meeting next week, so if you don't hear anything from DOT, it's extended, we can still have this. Thank you, I would like to say, thank you very much, me for your optimism with DOT, my listen to the community. So, so they, I wouldn't say they have a strong history of that, but it's nice to, it's nice to accept it's a possibility.
Well, if they don't, we'd learn to.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you very much for coming out tonight as well, I really appreciate, yeah. The answers to all of our questions and the clarity as well of where you don't have. John, did you have something to say?
You can't hear me.
You're muted.
Unmuted.
Just thank you for the opportunity to get to know the community. I didn't have an opportunity to introduce myself, but I'm sure that time will come. I do live at 2911. Uh. Uh, Glacier Highway, Aliaska Highway, which is. Right across the street from Victor Duncan's, uh, Winter Creek Lodge, right next to Grace Pleasance and the Mattingly. So. You're, anyone in the audience hearing me is welcome to stop by and introduce themselves at any time. That's an open house invitation. But thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Okay, thanks very much. So, um, at that point, we have, we have a specific action, sorry. Yes, we're going to take a, we're going to take a short recess, about three or four minutes.
Good point. Okay, I understand.
But that's not the point. I mean.
And I gave it to you.
30. They can say also.
Yeah.
It's a. So.
Thank you, John.
Well, first off. Yeah, I'm not sure what we're actually to.
It's like, it's like he was sitting down.
Everyone bundled up. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us. Doing some selling nights. It's my guy next week, and it was supposed to be my year in sale. All of you now. Official. Mini breaks official. Thanks for coming. I appreciate it. Oh, I know. Those online, we're gonna start. We'll behave ourselves. They got beat. What's the things? And they are. Oh, I should say. Pretty much cursed up.
The.
It doesn't say it. Yeah. And nobody got on. And one person got hit, got on first. And the second Indians got him. I think there's a lot of Monday. That's like the only time he's been speaking Sunday. We went down to Indians. He's never, you know. There's a lot of air from both sides. And now she's like. He's got all that stuff people. She's like, she's got several teams.
No, I hate big guy.
Yeah, he got struck out one incident. He got a hit.
I'm not too worried about it. They're gonna get. It's nice. These guys are playing.
They didn't run rule or, I mean, it's not like, you know.
These guys are playing, they're also playing.
French is a recount if they ever play. It's awesome. There's gonna be, I imagine layering team is gonna be pretty good, you know.
Well, I'll be his.
Fine. So just, and our problem is. Say rather not have. Player was trying to scale, I mean, with a thirteen, you got really good players out here. You got, you know, just. Anyways. Would have been fun to see. Are you going Thursday?
Yeah.
You gonna help the coach?
Well, I thought about, I thought about trying at least three sites.
Okay, so. Everybody, we're coming back in a session in a minute. So if you have a conversation, please take it into the outsider for you. Thank you. We should just, we will just wait one, one minute for a guy to return to the room and then start properly.
God, isn't that you?
Okay. Thank you. Uh, the room is a little bit emptier. But.
Do you want to move on?
Thanks for staying, Michelle.
We're gonna be back in session. We now move on to item number fourteen, which is a gender item L U C. Twenty three oh five oh five, a review of the H L B twenty twenty three work plan, five year management plan. So. Again, we have a request in front of us for asking to send them to June twenty third to go through our sort of normal two meeting process. Would anyone like to make that a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Thank you.
On second.
Thank you. Uh, so we have a motion in front of us to request an extension to June the twenty third for our public comments. Uh, any discussion on this motion? Seeing any discussion? Um, let's move on to a rock for vote.
Okay, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Etchington?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Um, so again, we have, we'll refer to the extension. If we don't get a response or don't get an extension, we will still try and we'll have to squeeze this into the special meeting we have scheduled. We'll schedule a response. Guy?
I guess I gotta, do we have another chance to, are we, this is, if we don't get the extension?
We do have a special meeting scheduled for the twenty fifth.
Yeah, which is.
Although it's probably gonna be only about.
I have a question about the developable properties and I don't know if. It's probably right now if the, if I can look like just. You know, it looked like a G I S exercise to me. They looked at slope, they looked at road lands, they looked, you know, they just put in all these, you know, things and you find out the I S and buffers and, you know, hit the button. And they said they consider some of their thing. But I don't know, anybody on the board or we talked about. Has been it goes and I was. You know, are those really developable or are they not? And, you know, have, have anybody had a time to look at those eleven properties that they've designated as developable?
I think the, I think the way they presented for perhaps learn a little bit more at the H L B advisory committee meeting next week. The way presented is when they presented the assembly, this is a little analysis. Um, and it's a probably a baseline estimate of cost. Expect the cost to actually be by other starting point. They're trying to revise the analysis a little bit further. But then the, the actual request was two or three parts. The first part was the inventory. The second part was uh, looking at financing mechanisms. Housing and the other part was to actually work with a little project to potentially develop one of the site or to move towards. So the, um, the first one of those three steps. How it's relevant to this item is I don't think the other two steps are actually listed in the work plan. I may have missed it, but I did not see them. So that's, you know, that's something we can discuss, discuss in the work plan itself. Brianna?
Uh, thanks, Mike and Guy. On this item, I haven't personally read through everything that I'd like to read through for this, but I would uh, propose that we discuss it on the twenty fifth, although I agree, we should bring up the fact that that meeting is gaining more items and then it's right before the H L B meeting at one thirty in the afternoon. But if we could come to that meeting, the twenty fifth, whether we know we get this extension with comments for letter, so that the letter can be discussed at the meeting and then we can, um, maybe discuss it again if we have just a work session just on the H L B drafts. So that we can have a formal letter sent or what is it called? Comment, formal comment from G B O S. I, so I'm saying that, so I hold myself to that and come to that meeting or have at least done some work before. Because there's just, the one comment about cemetery is not accurate. So I, I know that just by seeing it. And that's just the work plan for twenty twenty three.
I have a chance. Look at it like I'd like to either.
Yeah. So I think, I think the, the ask there is that we come along to the meeting on the twenty fifth with, uh, at least an initial set of.
Yeah.
I would say that there are a number, excuse me, but I would say that there aren't so many people in the community that are interested in this that I, I've kind of started reaching out and saying, you know, about X, Y, or Z because, uh, because we don't have it, if, if we don't get this extension, we don't have a whole lot of time. I, I do think it's gonna. We tell to you the contacts.
Yeah.
Ask them if they think or if you're specific. Because, uh, because we don't have time for a big community conversation on this if they don't extend.
Agreed.
Like the Tinder better than those.
Right here.
I just wanted to remind you, it's been a little bit ago and I know there's been a lot going on, but, um, you did receive a copy of Cox Chandler's comments on it too. So you might.
Oh, sorry.
Be looking at as well.
Okay.
Uh, oh, I know Brianna has something.
Go ahead. I just lost it.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, uh, just when I looked at it, um, also, you know, from the lens of being a former H L B employee years ago, um, they didn't know, and I called them and talked to them that we had stuff down at the industrial park. And they hadn't really caught up on their leases, right? And know the issue of that. And they didn't have any, just know that when I talked to them, bless their hearts, they don't have any of the conversations that I've had on the email with Shelley. So, um, if we've had conversations.
I'll address that. They don't allow them to see any of Shelley's emails.
So. So there we go. Right? Their, their case in hand causes challenges. For what was talked about beforehand. They told me I haven't had any stuff down there since two thousand sixteen and then I sent them some stuff and I said, oh, we paid here. You know, the stuff is still there, but. Um, yeah. So just know that all that history of the last number of years is missing. Which is not necessarily a bad thing, just I didn't realize that they were starting from a place of nothingness.
Yeah. No, I can, I, you know, call me, I commend them for, it looks like they're getting back on track and.
Yeah.
Even leader and doing things, but, um, yeah, you know, nobody's, there is no history.
Yeah.
Seemed like a lot of people are starting.
Yeah.
He's called a rebuilding seasons.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And then here's her plan. Boo.
Okay.
One last thing, please, is, uh, I think it was this plan that says at the end, uh, that they will accept comments after, but it will go in an appendix.
Yes.
We don't have to decide that now, but that's just something that it's already been stated, whether or not we accept that.
Yeah, my sense is this is an important enough document has such an impact on, um, on the community code, given the, you know, developable land is basically H L B. Um, except for the O T, it turned out. So I think we need, we need our comments to kind of formally, uh, include. Okay. Anything more on that item? Well, in that case, we will go and start new business. Item number eleven, uh, G B O S reorganization. Um, I think this is.
Uh.
Such as.
I moved that that go to the next meeting.
Right.
Her special.
A special meeting. I think that's the primary purpose, special meeting. Yep.
Well, this is, excuse me, this is new business so that it can be taken up at that meeting. So you don't really wanna remove.
It's not removing it. We're just discussing, but I think there is an argument of, um, the, what we sometimes do is have items on the agenda which are talking about when we're going to talk about something that should not necessarily go through, which probably shouldn't even be on the agenda necessarily.
Okay.
Definitely shouldn't have to go through a two meeting process. So I think the reorganization itself is fine. It's a new business, not business.
Okay.
But perhaps discussing the dates for it is one level too far back. But in any way, we, we're, uh, we're kind of acknowledging we're gonna, we have this additional power. So we'll probably end up both changing around the, uh, what the positions are as well as who does. Okay. Um, any other comment on that? Well, right. So we'll move on to number twelve. Um, G B S discussion on mid and long term goals, the new housing committee to be formed under Prop seven. Um, we have, of course, four, or at least we've named people on the committee. Um, I don't think we've given any um, detailed guidance yet. Um, this is, we can start the discussion now and then have a more detailed discussion next month. Around our next regular meeting. Yeah, excellent.
One thing that we'll do between now and then is just confirm that they are eligible voters for the service area.
Any other comments on the twelve?
Yeah. Need the name.
We need, no, well, maybe that's the, that's the take away. We should all come with a name.
Another minted number of total words. Okay.
Two Hs in a row.
I know. Two Hs in a row. We got guidelines. Don't think it's silly. I have to say H, H, H's.
Um.
When are they going to start meeting? Set that up?
Oh, no, we have not. I mean, I think that's the, we probably need to set down some, um, some general guidelines before that. So, so I would imagine it'll be after our regular meeting next, next month.
I don't know. We already had some general guidelines.
Um.
The posting.
The posting is very bad.
And it said monthly. Probably. So there was a safe assumption of dedication.
I'm sorry. I thought we already had guidelines for their goals.
Yes.
Yes, we did. Actually, you're right. We could go ahead and just, you know, say that, that's, that's where you can start off.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's gonna take them a minute or two.
So we have established them.
We can hit them with other stuff. By the way.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think allowing them to maybe set some of their goals too.
Or figure out another, yeah, move forward. Yeah. Yeah, I thought you laid it out really well, uh, originally my last, at the last.
Yeah, they were, they were the short term, the short medium term. So yes, we have, this is really the discussion to fill in the not closed.
Yeah.
So if we do not have the document in front of me, but if we have the, uh, the agreement you made last time, this meeting. That's the pad, it's closer on me, and then I can consider it.
Uh, I think it would be in the, I didn't copy the minutes today.
Okay.
I have the minutes for you.
Except for the copy I gave you.
Which meeting?
Uh, it was in the regular meeting last month, so further down. It was April. The problem in that's.
I think you have, you have a reasonable kind of set of goals that probably enough to, uh, for them to establish a first organization meeting.
Uh, just to follow what he said, I, I agree because, uh, they'll pick probably like the other committee did. They picked days they want to meet next and they chose chair, co-chair, holds and, and a name and just a tackle kind of.
Team plan?
Yeah, for the short term goals, which are just the year.
Yes.
Okay.
So I think that meeting could have been before, um, we set everything else.
But to clarify, then we're, we're saying as a body, without necessarily moving and taking action. We're saying we're comfortable that we've, uh, we've set enough, you know, guidelines and goals that they can have a they can go ahead with initially organizational meeting between now and next month. If the people on that, if we can establish who the seven are and, uh, they can arrange a date and start to meet. Okay.
Hey, I do have just one more question. Did we, is this one under the, um, I forgot, is it under like land use and trails? It, or, or the public has a vote or is it just the seven members?
We established this to be the, the similar structure to P S A, where the, uh, people on the board members have a vote to start public.
Okay.
So all the public, everybody has a vote and so it's a different quorum, it's a different set of people.
Right. No, I'm glad. Yeah. Yeah. I thought that's what that is just.
And again, it also has to do with the potential that they would be discussing or managing some aspect of finances, particularly.
Yeah, they'll be advised.
Yes. Okay.
Okay. If there's nothing more on item twelve, move to item thirteen. Consider P S A request for funding assistance for cyber building workshop to be held in October.
So they are considering that right now at P S A. We wanted to get in front of you that they're doing this consideration to host this workshop and bring up a officer from Homer, uh, who is doing this on the peninsula and it would pay for his expenses and time to be here uh, to do that presentation in the fall. Um, so and we would host it here in this room. So, so probably most likely next month, uh, they will uh, vote on it and if they approve it, we'll come to the G B O S to seek funding. Uh, we are looking at funding mechanisms. We do have a bit of money that we could use out of the public safety to help fund this. Um, but we cannot fund the whole thing just because we use a lot of that for towing and other mitigation issues. Um, so I know Tommy is looking into other funding to help cover it. So, so we'll have more details about that when we come to you next month.
Thanks. Thank you. Uh, any other comments to thirteen? If not, we will move to fifteen. Uh, staff request for approval of expenses related to due process for good transplant by P and Z.
So there's a two part, uh, request. Uh, the one part is that in order to get the, go through P and Z and the assembly, we have a four thousand dollar application fee that we have to submit to planning, um, to have this, uh, considered. Um, and we've already met with them and done a pre app and got their input. Um, in part getting their input, we got comments from them um, of things they would like to see changed in the plan. Nothing substantial, but more context, um, and editorial. Um, and so in order to do that, we would, uh, bring on Huddle to help us with it in the technical changes. Um, so in front of you is a proposal for them to do that and then also work with us going through the P and Z and assembly process. If we encounter any issues there, uh, they would help us with changing the document to accommodate those changes. Um, and then also be at the meeting with us to help present the plan to P and Z and the assembly, um, in that aspect. Uh, we do have a little bit of funding left with Huddle, um, just under two thousand, really like sixteen hundred dollars from our previous planning process. Um, and so we would, uh, subtract that from this and, and seek the difference, uh, to use out of the capital project. So two requests, four thousand dollars for the P and Z and then, um, uh, the, uh, forty nine fifty minus sixteen hundred dollars for Huddle to support us through that process. So that's what we'll be seeking next month for approval from G B O S.
Okay. Any questions? Actually, I do have questions. Um, normally when you have a, I think if you have a pre application, then you get some sense of time scale, uh, before the P and Z uh, hearing. Did you get that?
It didn't give it to me on this one. They said it's really dependent on when we submit our app, like final application.
Yes, of course. Yes.
So we wouldn't do that until we, after we had approval from the board. So that would most likely be, we would get things prepped and be ready to really go for it at, in, in June. So I think we'd most likely probably be into late summer or fall before we go to P and Z, just because of our schedule.
And it is just P and Z is the only hearing, then the assembly.
And then the assembly, if we have to get past the, yeah.
Any other questions on fifteen? If not, we'll move on to sixteen. Um, now this is where I have the, uh, a disclosure. So it's new. There are no ones. Or the new ones.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mike, I'll take the chair for number sixteen or for a moment.
So, yeah, so I have a disclosure, um, that this substation in Vale Drive is immediately outside my house. Um, and I did not see any elevation. Did you, did you get an elevation? I see that.
No, there, uh.
C disappears from the.
Uh, we didn't have a, a C, I think.
Yeah, we never.
The, um, this is immediately outside my house. It obviously does have a, uh, a significant impact on me personal, my private interests. Whether it's substantial or not is not my call. Whether it's substantial or not is not my call.
Okay. But I will agree that it affects you substantially. But I'll ask you. A question to decide whether.
Are there new questions? Are actually.
Are they here?
I don't think so.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I didn't know there were new questions.
Yeah, they changed the. Plus music. So.
Well, yeah, they are easier.
They're easier.
I'll wait and uh, clarify this conflict in the next meeting, since it's not in action tonight. And we'll get those new questions in front of you.
Yes, so this is an information-seeking item right now, so I would uh, rule that we continue the item and disclose at the next meeting.
Okay, and Mike, if you have a quick link to those questions, send them to us, and we'll get it, we'll get them on that format for you.
I'd like to mention, there was actually a, um, I was sending to the rules meeting, there was a little discussion about it and a set of examples, and it was actually really clear.
Okay.
Send a link around to you for everybody.
Perfect.
Yeah, I have a question, did, this came out at Land Use Committee, right, our last meeting?
Correct.
And there wasn't any. Did we have some made for made W W E?
No, I encouraged them, I told them, why won't you attend the second meeting when you have your full drawing sets done? Um, just knowing that we were at, most likely this is getting late in the meeting. Um, and so I, I, I've been working closely with on this because it is a intergovernment use permit, and uh. Uh, and so it's an agreement between Parks and Rec and A W U for the use of this land to build. Uh, what they're doing here is building a new booster station for the water system. Um, which will eliminate several other sys, stations. Um, and uh, allow to get high pressure throughout the whole valley, especially up Echo Ridge, Vale, Saint Johann. Uh, in those locations, and over on Timberline, um, which could also lead to a hydrant someday at the top of Echo. Uh, because they would have enough water pressure to make the hydrant work, so. Um, so uh, this is uh, and I'll just show you the map here. Um. This is on Vale Road, and uh, it's between Vale Circle and Alpine Meadows, right across the street from Mike. Um, as a reference, and uh, they would be building a building here um, that uh, would house the uh, water unit in it, and um. And then their long-term goal is to use the easement, the park easement through here as a proposed utility for their water. Uh, to connect uh, Timberline to Vale, and that, and, and right now, on each side, on Vale and Timberline, are two different booster stations. That feed back to the valley uh, in that, in that area, so. So they will be at the next meeting, and they have a contractor engineer right now working on building design, so they can show what the building look like. We definitely, in our agreement, um, uh, uh, permit here, we've asked them to. Uh, describe the building and landscaping to mitigate the visual impact associated with this permit, so we're, we're aware that. We want to try to mitigate the impact to the view shed for the residential units around there. Um, but the overall, I think, result would be is a strong improvement to our existing water system. Um, and this would be a multi-billion dollar investment by A W U into the system.
And not exceed sixty logging this.
Thirty airplane parking spots.
I thought it was very good area, is it like a, you know, it's not like a park, right, or like where?
But I'm not saying that, I'm not saying.
It is a green belt strip, it's not dedicated parkland, but we do manage it under Parks and Rec um, in that aspect, so it's, it's maintained as recreational. But it's basically wetland, um, and in the middle of it is actually probably open water, and then, so.
Uh, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, maybe it says it somewhere in here, how long would it take them to, from start to finish?
That would be a good question for engineers. Yeah. Probably just depends on uh, it would probably be a summer build in that aspect, but depends on what they have to do to. Mitigate the impact to the water system when they put it in, because they would be eliminating or maybe possibly removing. Uh, the existing booster system, so uh, they would probably have to. Figure out how to make that work.
And, and they say possibly here could, could hydrants up? Further up the hill?
Well, they, they've mentioned that, and I think that'd be a question for the engineers, and I know that's been a request of the fire department, and I know it's um. You know, definitely request the residents up there, especially after the fire at Taco, Echo, and how many pump trucks it took to get the water up that hill, so. Um, and they have water issues already up there, um, they have a booster station right at the corner of Echo and Saint Meritz there. So that hopefully, that would eliminate that building, um, because the system would be charged, so. So yeah, I think those are goals that they're, they see as weakness in their existing system.
Thanks.
Well, I'm kidding. Like, okay. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ignore that happen. Um, item seventeen, gender item N U C twenty-three oh five dash oh seven, alien species request or N U C recommendation, G B S letter of non objection. Spray on M O A land twenty-three and twenty-four.
Uh, we have Tim here to present tonight, and uh, hi, Tim, can you hear us?
I can, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Um, yeah, I was planning a, a brief but a little bit longer presentation next month, um, but I can just speak briefly. Um, you know, I've been working on invasive plants, control work in Gerwood is a partnership with the community for about eight years. Uh, so G B O S has heard from me in the past, I recognize they're probably new members. Um, but basically, we're trying to address harmful invasive species that can move, you know, from our neighborhoods and. Trailheads into natural areas and cause uh, ecological disruption. Um, so we've been, yeah, working throughout the community for a number of years, uh, so we're just asking for a letter of non, non objection. Uh, for some targeted herbicide uh, applications uh, throughout the community on M O A land. So we, so we do look at the full range of options, you know, first, we try to do everything we can to, to get, to take preventative efforts. And when, you know, when groups are doing development to, to take preventative measures, you know, after that is hand pulling and then cutting. Um, but the, the, the most aggressive invasive species are just really hard to kill, and herbicide is, so herbicide's the last tool, but it's the one, only one that works. For some of these worst species. Um, so yeah, there's a, there's a few hotspots we'd like to go after this, this next year or two. Uh, we've gotten rid of a lot of really bad populations um, over the last number of years. Um. So just, yeah, wanted to keep it brief, but I could answer any questions, of course.
Thank you. Any questions on board?
Yeah. Hey, Tim, yeah, thanks, um, so you're, you're gonna present on this later with more detail, um. Probably provide a map and, and some information of like, um, you know, toxicity or, or. How long, you know, last after you spray, information of, you know, um. How it'll affect pets, do you keep them out of it, kind of, if you could bring some of those.
Yep, certainly. Yep, certainly.
Probably already planning on it, I, I, I do remember, I live on, off of um, Tonnestool, and there's.
Okay.
I think you, you had. Down there, and there were some signage and things, but um.
Yep.
You know, um, yeah, some of those questions I think people will ask, if you could bring that information, that'd be great.
Certainly, yep, will do.
Yeah.
Thank you, I just want to thank you, Tim, for staying, I've seen your presentation and your patience for always being at ten P M. At our meetings, and I appreciate the slides with the toxicity levels, I think it's really helpful for anyone that sees them, so thank you.
Great, yep, thank you.
Thank you, Tim, um, not seeing any questions, so uh, we will discuss that. Decide whether we're gonna send a letter of non objection next month. Um, item eighteen, good and fly department request purchase of new pump truck. Estimated one million one hundred fifty-two thousand dollars funded through G F R four oh six account. Um. Who's gonna start on that?
We will tag team this together.
Yeah, okay, sure, uh, you might recall, we talked about this in the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one G V S meetings. Uh, and that's where we talked about, uh, at that time, I was refusing, uh, we went for a uh, area, a bond, a fire service bond. And at that time, I think the decision after a number of meetings was for us to go ahead and look at a loan situation. Um, and then the opportunity came to get uh, Rescue Forty-One on an area-wide bond, so we went ahead with that. And now we're circling around for Engine Forty-One. Engine Forty-One is our frontline engine for structural response. Um, it started its life with the department around nineteen ninety-nine. I was here, Mike Davidson, who's online, also was here, Chief Davidson, who was also here at that time. Um, and we were a lot younger and more nimble, as also Engine Forty-One was at that time. Um, and uh, Engine Forty-One uh, will be, when it's, if this goes through, it'll be twenty-five years old when it's retired. Uh, that's ten years past its N F P A uh, recommended timeline to remove it from frontline service, to put it in reserve status. Um, then five years past N F P A recommended removal from active service, now. Our engines here uh, do not get as much mileage, um, given the small nature of our valley, right? So I think that even though we're past our N F P A recommendation, I think uh. We got a good life out of it, I think for any service area to get twenty-five years out of an engine is, is a really good deal, so. Um, we couldn't get any longer than that. Um, the estimated time of delivery uh, would be four hundred and twenty-five days, so if we ordered it in June, uh, it would not come in service until uh, twenty twenty-four. Uh, I've added on a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for change orders, radios and equipment, because the engine comes, but it still needs radios and. Other things uh, to make it functional, we'll probably pull out the um. Uh, CAD, the new CAD system we have in the old one and move it into the new one, so we'll try and move things that we can, and move the equipment that we can. Um. We've elected to go on a bulk purchase order with A F D. Um, there's a, I forget savings, if we buy at the same time, A F D is putting in an order of five, it would be the six, which would give all six a um. Price break, and additionally, um, we're gonna use the A F D spec, so it won't be any, you know, there won't be very much modification from the spec that all the other engines are have. So we will not have to worry about specialized parts, because there will be parts, you know, as they go to the shop, you won't have a. You don't want to have the only engine of that type or manufacturer at the shop, because then they have to carry a specialized one. Parts. Um, and uh, any questions for me?
I have one, uh, what you just said, Chief Weston, about bulk ordering with A F D, does that change this timeline at all?
No, no, this is the, this is the best timeline.
Great.
So.
So does that include the, is that bulk order include the one to three? Yeah.
No, the, uh, mo, my understanding is it's five engines for A F D. Chiggyak had a request for a rescue, for a rescue, and that was the one that. Was supposed to be an area-wide bond, somehow magically ended up as a service area bond, so I'm not sure they're gonna, I don't think they're gonna issue it, so they call that. Uh, but that's a different, that's a different type of equipment, uh, same, you know, it's big and red, but it's different function, um.
I think Amanda, does Amanda have the hand up? I see a hand on that. You scroll.
Oh, Amanda, uh, Brett Willbanks hasn't stand up, sorry, I'll scroll that.
Okay, I will come to you, Brett, I just want to make sure there's no other questions from you first.
Do we want to talk about finances, or you want to go to Brett?
She has one.
Okay.
Financial side.
So, um, so uh, uh, the total here would be one million one hundred and fifty-one thousand three hundred fifty-three dot three. Five hundred thirty-one dollars. Um, what we are proposing is to, right now in the Gerwood Campbell account, uh, they, with this contribution, will have four hundred and ninety-six thousand. That we've been saving towards this purchase, um, while also uh, maintaining other uh, cost responsibilities uh, for capital needs. Um, so uh, we would take out thirty percent uh, down on this capital payment. Um, and so using three hundred and fifty-one thousand of the capital account, um, and then finance eight hundred thousand at the current interest rate of five point five. Um, and the longest term we can get is ten years. Um, so the quarterly payments would be twenty-six thousand dollars uh, for a total of a hundred and four thousand five hundred and forty-one eighty cents annually. So that'd be forty payments until twenty thirty-three, unless we paid it off early, no uh, penalty for early payment. Um, so we can pay it off early as we see it, um, and uh, if we did pay it over the ten years, the interest would be two hundred and forty-five thousand. Um, and change there. Um, uh, what that would leave in capital budget right now is a hundred and forty-four thousand, um, and we would still uh. Request G B O S to fund annual contributions, because there will be other operating expenses, as always with fire and rescue as it comes up, and then um. Um, we would uh, um, yep, and we would have a request for increase, because right now, we are budgeted for eighty thousand a year in budget loans. Um, and those are based on the old interest rates that we were seeing about three years ago. Um, and also a lesser price inflation is really, is one area where inflation hits is things like this. Um, and so we would need to increase that by twenty-four thousand on that uh, operating budget to, to get to a hundred and four thousand, to make sure we have adequate. Um, funding for the, for the payments every year, um, in that aspect, and then we broke down, um. Here's the shiny picture of the new rig, um, well, it's not shiny, but it's more the specs, and then uh, there's a breakdown of the um, payments. Um, over time that we would pay out annually uh, for the, for the apparatus. Finance uh, and O M B are supportive of this, uh, they're appreciative that the service area has put funds aside to get themselves set, especially for substantial down payment thirty percent. Uh, whereas most uh, the way they work is they go out to bond and they finance the whole thing without a payment. Um, so uh, they were surprised to see we were set and ready to do it, and so they've already actually drafted most of the assembly documents. Um, they're just waiting on G B O S to uh, approve this purchase, um, which I told would be next month, so. So yeah, that's sort of their quick breakdown, and we can get more in those details at next month's meeting too.
Uh, I've got a question, if uh, if it had those requirements, see, you know, the loan rates were.
About the same.
Still are outside.
Yeah, we've actually called this a master lease, and the, the municipality uses it for purchasing vehicles, so school buses, um, fleet, things like that, and it's fairly similar to. What bonding rates are, um, in that aspect, so. Um, you may get a little bit lower with bond, but um, the way interest rates are right now, five point five, that's, that's fairly good for a municipal purchase. And now, keep in mind, five point five is just a note, it's a, it's a indication that we don't get our interest rate locked in until we actually purchase the loan, so. Which would be after assembly approval, so the interest rates could either go up or down, who knows what we get after that.
We propose. In um, um, okay, any other questions on board? Jennifer?
Yeah, just, just throw a quick reaction. Um, you were talking about pulling some of the gear or equipment from. The one and transferring it to the other, I gather you've already run the numbers on what you think you can salvage and what. Not, not, not entirely, uh, usually when you bond, it's a little different experience for me, when you bond for an engine, you usually replace everything. We're gonna try and move stuff over, right, so we're gonna try and move as much as we get, just like we're doing with, with Rescue Forty-One, we're trying to move everything, so. We're gonna try, you know, but there, there might be something where, like the radio can be moved or whatever reason, so might we'll have to radio, so. So is this an estimated best case scenario? It's a, I think it's a pretty good scenario, I talked to A F D and, and we're figuring that's the number, so, unless there's something. You know, there's always something that surprises me when we go to municipal purchasing, but this is the best case scenario that. I have.
Or best gets.
Best gets, best guess, uh, yeah, no, going the unknown, if you told me they would order trucks without all the other stuff that we asked them to order, I would have never thought they would have done that. So. So. Yes.
Okay, um, thank you, so.
There would be a difference, like, it would have an additional radio versus the A F D one that would have one radio, we would have a ham, you know, there are such, a few differences between us and. Fifty, so there would be.
Okay, um, Brett, please go ahead.
Uh, yeah, hey, thanks for that, um, so, I mean, can we sell this, is this the service area's uh, vehicle to then sell? Can we market this and then put the money back into, um, say, the, you know, the Public Safety Fund again? After we strip it?
Yeah, so that's what, that's what happens to them, they usually go up for municipal surplus, and so they either turn into. A surplus vehicle, like I believe the municipality would like to make Rescue Forty-One. Uh. A reserve rescue, I've heard that been bantered about, I've also known other service areas that would like to buy it. Is what it is, um, so yes, in theory, the municipality, if A F D said we don't have any other use for it, then it would go. Then it would go to sale. However, it's twenty-five years old. So it's going to be ten years past when it should actually be in service. But if you really had nothing, maybe you wouldn't want it, right? So, and also some people turn them into like beer wagons, hot tub wagons. There's many different things you can do, coffee carts. You know, there's many different things you can do with these. Um, but I don't.
I guess.
I don't think we would get big bucks from it.
Okay, well, I get. I, I guess I'm still not clear. So is it ours to sell or is it the municipalities to take and put into reserve status? If we purchase this within our service area. I mean, I, I know you couldn't get tools out of them. Um, so do they just take the truck or what?
I.
I think there's two things that could happen here. The uh, it could be a uh, a strategy aspect to have it as a reserve. So if any of the rigs go down, there is a reserve vehicle. Um, one thing that we've learned that by going through auction, they get pennies on the dollar for these uh, when they go out to auction. It it may be just a couple thousand dollars sometimes that they come in um at and and get going. Otherwise, sometimes it may go for twenty-five thousand. Um, eh, most recently, they've had some ladder trucks go and they barely even sold. So, so it just depends on what happens there. Um, sometimes it is good to keep it in reserve so that. If our engine did go down, it could be pulled a bit down here or an engine went down somewhere else in the. In the municipality, it could be available. But problem is, is that at twenty-five years old, when you start getting parts for it. I don't know if it was this engine or one of the pumpers, they had to actually custom make parts for it to keep it running at one.
Well, I, I, you know, I'm not saying it's not, it can't be done. Um, I do know, like, when you're purchased a, a ladder truck from. I think it was a ladder truck, or something, some type of aerial apparatus from. University Fire, which had been somebody else's before that. They didn't have it for very long before they realized that they had to get rid of it. So, you know, I know that uh, other vehicles have recently gone down to whose past. So, you know, there, you get what you get. Hope has some old Chidiac ambulance, uh, old Chidiac ambulance. Sometimes there's, when the municipality circuses, they've usually been like, it's pretty hard. Um, I can't speak to what AFD's status is on how many reserve engines they have anymore. When we went through, and again, I'm gonna jump in my old job, when we went through nine eleven. Uh, and we brought in secondary staffing for nine eleven, we didn't have any engines for the secondary staffing shift, shift to come in and use. And so at that time, the idea was to have additional reserve engines. With fully, fully with equipment. That's why you buy new equipment with your bond. So that you wouldn't just jump on a, a stripped-down apparatus with nothing in it. Um, and so we had duplicated engines. So if something went down, you weren't spending hours trying to strip equipment like we do right now. You'd actually just move into something that was already there, already ready. Um, and so I think that they've moved away from that again. I don't really know. Um, so because right now, we don't have reserves right now, right?
I think also their, their maintenance shop can barely keep up with.
The other bigger picture issue is that um, i- and this is my personal opinion based on when I. Oversaw the shop before and had a plan to replace the shop. Was that the, the shop was built to a nineteen sixty specification, when you had a nineteen sixty level of fleet. Cars are bigger, there's many more, and AFD's still trying to uh move the same amount of fleet through there. Well, utilization-wise, you can't have enough mechanics. You don't have enough room to move around. Um, they need a bigger shop, but they haven't moved to that yet, even though that was.
I think we've probably moved away from the, from the question.
Yeah.
Just to follow up more research, so the, if um, if it's sold, then effectively the money would come to the service area.
Yeah.
If it goes into the general fleet, it doesn't. Is that the, we don't get compensation because we've lost it?
No.
Okay.
But, you know, you could, we could write a resolution to AFD to have it sold.
Right.
And have the money and just go into our undesignated account.
Okay.
Or, yep, so, so it could happen. A lot of times what happens, these get sold and people strip them down for the pumps and the motor. And then the rest of the frame they don't really want, so.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on this item? Welcome. We will move on to uh item twenty, um, nineteen, sorry. Uh, do you need a slide acknowledging?
Uh, thank you, Mike. I suggested this go on the agenda because it was brought up at the last meeting after. I forget, the public land use having air acknowledgement. So we could start the discussion today. Or just know that we have it as an option. If it's something we'd like to enter to meet, open to meetings with. It can be appropriate. Uh, but I'm really glad that Land Use has one now because that is there. That's what they embody is land.
Thank you. Did we um, did we go back through the process of sort of reevaluating that with the uh, with the consultant expert? We uh, we initially discussed land acknowledges, but we follow up on that.
No, they had a workshop last week and she had reached out to me individually to attend, but I uh. They'd actually had one three weeks ago, then they canceled it, moved it to the Sunday that I couldn't attend. But it's the same workshop, I think. That was put on for you guys earlier. Um, but uh, yeah, the. The forums really didn't address it any more than we had. I would support it.
Okay.
That's the end. Actually, we'll bring that back for decision next time. Any other thoughts? If not, we will move on to item twenty-one. Thank you very much for staying to the bitter end. Consider sport proposal update of a transportation plan, DOT twenty twenty-four, any one program. And so, including all the other ground programs that are coming ahead.
Yeah. So I uh, I started this conversation with Kyle, talking about.
Here's yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Mark is with uh DOT on the Equidary Planner. Um, so I originally had started this conversation with Kyle because he had some questions about the CTP and TAP projects. Um, and we are re uh, putting, are putting together our twenty-four, twenty-five uh annual work plan. Uh, and we were asked to come up with some ideas. Um, and I know in the back of my mind, uh, the Gerwood Transportation Plan has been kind of sitting there. Since I know that um, as part of the area plan, it had to be down scoped out of it a little bit due to uh funding considerations. So. Um, I was hoping and, and I ended up reaching out to the uh, GBOs. Um, that would be more of a, a collaborative effort between DOT, uh, probably medium on reach planning. And uh, GDSA, GBOS, um, uh, to kind of re, that, the current plan is, is about twenty-two years old now. Um, it was combined with the uh, uh, commercial lands. Um, so I, I, and it doesn't even mention the airport at all in it. So, um, I, I think it's kind of time for an update and I, uh, you know, DOT has a lot of assets and. They, they manage the, the, a lot of the main arteries through the, through the valley too. So, um. A couple of things, uh, if I, I still kind of, I, I wanted to make sure I wasn't stepping on feet, but uh. I, I liked some funding had been found and it was, uh, it was back in the area plan, a little more robustly. Uh, but, um. I can't guarantee even if I do put a pitch in, it'll get funded, uh, because it's just a proposal. Um, and then if it does get put into the annual work plan and we start moving forward with it. Uh, it'll likely also require uh an ask of uh funding uh participation as well. So whether that's through the meeting or through GBOS or GDSA, so.
Okay. Um, I, I've already asked you this question, so I know the answer, but I'll ask you. So if this is a DOT-funded uh plan, would it still include municipal assets, um, service area assets, et cetera? So it encompass everything, public transportation?
Yes, that, I mean, that's the ultimate goal, right, is to be a comprehensive transportation plan for the valley. So I would assume it would also include the severed highway. Since, and probably the, uh, the way your access tunnel and all of that, since you can place it from here. Um, you've uh, you know, like, there's not a grocery store in town, right, other than the north and that. So I'm assuming a lot of the residents go to Angkor to go shopping. So the, the highway north of here is also pretty important. Uh, I'll just go, a highway is the main artery into town. Uh, and we also uh maintain part of Crook Creek Road too. So, and the airport. Um, but all, I mean, everything else is uh, is locally maintained. So, um, I think the two thousand and one plan is a good starting point, which would be nice. Um, and just build off of that. And look at, look at it more as a more comprehensive plan. I know there's a, like, looking at the old two thousand and one plan, there's a lot of talk of railroads spurs at the valley. Um, uh, and you know, and it, 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 probably twenty years ago, that looked pretty cool. I don't know how realistic that is and whether that would stay in, but um, there's a lot of really good stuff that came out of it and I still reference it all the time, so.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions?
I think my, I had, the other thing I kept, when I was talking to my supervisor about this, was whether or not DOT would be lead on it or. Uh, the municipality or GBOS or GDSA too. So, uh, stuff to work out, I think, if we're moving forward with it. But.
Thank you.
Please, I gotta tell you, go ahead.
Jennifer?
Sure, okay. Um. I'm gonna put, I don't want to put you on the spot, and my first thought about this is like, yeah, that sounds great, but my, my second thought is. Uh, in trying to work with DOT on, on bike path, we ended up with swoops we hate on bike paths. And in asking for help with intersection, we ended up with a swoop we hate, and now it's making progress. It definitely matters what we do. We've requested this, that, and the other thing, don't get it back. And so. There's a part of me that kind of hates to ask DOT for anything, right? Because they feel all in it and they're like, okay, here's what we're doing. And we're like, yeah, we hate that. And then, well, you know, tough, here we go. And, and like, I don't mean to put, I don't, really don't mean to put you on the spot. But there's not a good history.
Oh, I completely understand. I think, you know, in the long haul, e- even if I was to put my proposal in, it gets accepted and we try to negotiate a work partnership. It might not go forward too. So I, I mean, I can understand the bad button that's there. Now, DOT, DOT is kind of a gorilla, right? And they do what they want, so.
It feels a little bit like.
No, I remember the process. I think you had mentioned that's more encouraging to me. Uh, you said you don't know DOT will write it or the media will write it.
Well, I'm assuming we'd have it, we'd put a consultant on it, right? And so we, but we'd all be partnerships in that. I mean, looking through the two thousand and one document, it's obviously a municipal-led effort, right? With a municipal focus. Um, and so, and I get that. I mean, it's, there's a, I mean, there's a lot of community here besides DOT facilities. But transportation-wise, you know, it, it's not very comprehensive, right? Like I said, like, there's no mention of the airport. Um, I mean, the, the railroad's involved, there's some highway stuff, but um, kind of looking, there's a lot of stuff coming down the pipeline too, right? So we got the interchange, we got highway upgrades, um, we might have a hotel at the airport. Um, but, um. I mean, we, it's, you know, like, looking back at that document that's twenty years old and, and seeing how it's kind of like. Uh, what, what is, what has come out of it that actually has happened? And it's not a whole lot. I mean. Uh, but I think, looking at that and the, the, the South Townsite Plan, this is, this building, I think, is one of the only. Couple of things that have come out of those plans over the last twenty years. So, um, you know, it's just a visioning document. And it's kind of like, what does the community want and need, right? And that's kind of the whole point of the plan, is to kind of forward think about the needs. You know, where's development gonna happen? You know, if Old Hills or some other development happens at Crook Road, Crook Creek Road's gonna have to be upgraded, right? Like, it's not gonna be able to handle, you know, a couple hundred more homes at the way it is. It's gonna need. UI and children are gonna be added and put on there. Probably have to have a dedicated uh, pedestrian path or multi-use path, so. And as, as a DOT facility, that's on DOT, right? So. That is your.
No, yeah, I just, you know, like, the input from Gerwood itself, and, you know, I mean, plans are. You know, they do, they may never come to fruition, but they also allow, you know, like it is for. Grants and everything, you know.
This is exactly it. Now, if you look, and that's, I was gonna talk about some, uh, some federal money here too, that's coming open. Um, but, you know, like, if you, if you look at it and you find a community needing, you have, I committed something you want or uh. It's been established as, as something that you need, right? Um, and then you can go to a granting opportunity. So who identified this? And this is what we'd like to do. So, but, but that's the way, and, and you know, like, with a lot of the Gerwood documents, with the area plan being from the nineties. I mean, the current one, not the one that's being built, but uh, you know, in the, the transportation plan that's twenty years old. And a lot of the other neighborhood plans are aging pretty quickly too. So. It's my hope is to get something new and to find, try to find some funding, help you guys get that built. Built, made, written, you know.
Yeah.
Thank you. I also just wanted to thank you for bringing us forward and working toward this. Because we've found and already maybe know that without plans, we have consequences. So it really behooves us to have a plan if it doesn't ever all happen.
And I don't know if you reviewed the two thousand and one plan recently, but I don't know if it still means kind of the vision the group has now.
Well, and my, I was going to ask the question that was basically what Guy was asking, but when you last said someone will take the lead, would, if, if. As the lead, would we still be working with you?
Well, I'm assuming if I put this in a NAD project, we'd be providing some funding. And like I said, you're probably being asked that other, let's say, those would provide funding as well. But um, my whole, my whole idea is that DOT would have a statement, because we would like to have some participation as well. But, but not take it, I don't, I don't really wanna, I, you know, I don't want to say that would be, we'd be running, taking it over, so. I, I, I mean, ideally, it would be more of a community-led, I think, endeavor, since um, it would benefit you guys the most.
But I think probably the situation here is if you can, if we can get funding from one source, it's could be easier to loosen out the municipality, for example. If it's a market, it's the idea of kind of a mattress, so.
Yeah, and I don't know what that, that percentage would be. You know, we'd have to negotiate that later if it came up. Uh, and I don't know the timeline, if, if I was to get it in annual work program, if it would happen this school year or next fiscal year. Um, would it happen in those two years at all? I'm still pretty. Um. Any other questions about transportation?
I think so. Did you want to say something about the uh, the protect?
I, yeah, do. So, um, the promoting resiliency opera. Promoting resilient operations for transformative, efficient, and cost-saving transportation is called protect. That's the protect program. That's the new uh, federal highways administration's uh granting opportunity that's uh out right now and is open till August. Um, and so this is the discretionary portion, which means anybody can apply for it and it's competitive, uh, like a lot of the grants are. Uh, but it helps grow uh infrastructure resiliency. And so there are a couple of different kind of buckets inside this bigger grant. There's uh, planning grants, uh, so to write a resiliency and protect them. And hazard mitigation kind of stuff. Um, there are resiliency improvement brands that lead to construction, so uh, improving infrastructure. Um, there's community, community resiliency and evacuation route brands. And uh, Etsy coastal commi, uh, coastal infrastructure grants. Um, the kicker is you have to have a resiliency plan. In order to get a lot of the construction money out of this program. But the nice thing is the planning grants are a hundred percent better participation. Which means if you can apply for a grant, they'll pay for it. You'll get your resiliency plan and then you can start applying that. Like, eh, you have, so like, oh, it's in town and stuff like that. If that's identified as an issue, which it should be. Um, then you can say, we've identified this as a resiliency issue, and you go to protect for uh, for construction money. And that's an eighty-twenty split right now in their guidelines. Um, on the flip side. Uh, DOT is also getting formula funds, which means we just get a bunch of money out of the program. And they're uh developing a similar program called the uh Resiliency and Coastal Protection Program. Uh, which will do have similar uh functions. It'll have planning, bro, grants and then construction grants. Um, and the guidance online on our website. Uh, you, I think you can have to have a resiliency plan or something similar, like maybe a hazard mitigation plan. I don't think you guys have a hazard mitigation plan either, so.
I mean, there is a mutants.
But, so, does, does the community have a plan? Does it include Gerwood, do you?
What it did.
It did, but who knows how accurate it is.
How old is it?
Well, I know Amanda Loach has been working on that, so if you have a question, ask her.
So, just add something else, but, you know, if. That our program will probably be coming out sometime this summer, hopefully, if the timeline still holds. So.
So is that, so we had, we had as a mitigation plan. Do its aspects about what they, they're in drainage, then that provides a mechanism for funding, for example.
Exactly, right. So, again, going back to having a plan.
Yeah.
When you call out action items in your plan, you can then go for funding as because they've been called out and they've been identified, so.
Do you have more about this?
The the state side or the federal side?
For the Protect, you have to learn more about. We'll learn more about when he was talking about these these grants availability and.
I gave Margaret links.
The links of the packet here.
Oh, and we also have a state website set up, but it doesn't have much information. I'm in, I was told guidance should probably coming out for planner review. Late June, early July. And then they'll start like having us come out and talk to you guys about it when they know a little bit more. But unfortunately, none of the C T P and TAP projects you guys submitted got forward, which is unfortunate. I was hoping at least Alberg might have a shot and the culverts. But this resiliency stuff probably would get very involved, not just with the fish passage culverts, but with any drainage structure. That you've identified as leading like resilience, having resilience.
This would include infrastructure, whether it's municipal, service area or or D O T as well.
Right, yeah. Well, we would probably, you would probably only apply for a grant through, like. Whoever maintains the facility.
Okay. I'm thinking of the planning side of it.
Oh, for the planning, yes, so. Do you have more time?
Well, what I'm thinking about, for example, is the sort of things that come up all the time are evacuation group, second evacuation group. The bridge area, which is this one. It was a D O T facility, the bridge of the railway as well. But there was sort of things which are D O T, D O T infrastructure as well as municipal structure.
Great, so in in building your plan, if those get called out, then you can actually come to D O T. Right, well, they go up your C I P list too, right? And then you have a little more ammunition when they're identified in that resiliency plan.
Okay, thank you.
I'm done. And the last thing, sorry, we have a new mapper for Alaska Project Exchange called Apex Mapper, which has all the, it's replacing Navigator. And that's the last thing.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for speaking to that.
Appreciate it. No, I'm glad I could reach out and hopefully give you guys some good news.
Okay.
Thank you. You got anything else for me?
I think so. Any other questions?
Excellent. Thank you, guys. I'm going to take off. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I think we are at the end of the agenda, so I will call for. For an agenda.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Guessing you're second to that. Thank you so much. Thank you. We are now.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.